Planning Board Meeting, City of Laconia at the order. Savannah, would you call the rule?
In attendance tonight, we have Gail Over, Ari Dion, Dave Luette, Counselor Bruce Chaney, Rich McNeil, I always have Rich McNeil, sorry. Amy Lubisic, Planning Director Rob Mora, and I'm Savannah Brunel.
Thank you. Recording Secretary is Savannah Brunel. Staff in attendance is Rob Mora. Are there any corrections to the minutes from the previous meeting?
No.
I guess I'd look for a motion to accept the minutes?
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from this.
I'll second it.
Savannah, would you take a vote? We don't need a vote.
You can just vote and just raise your hand.
Okay. Okay, thank you. No continued public hearings. So our first public hearing is PB 2026-004 White Oaks Road. Fourteen-unit condominium subdivision, multifamily site plan, and CUP for performance zoning. Rob, is this complete and ready for acceptance?
Yep, issue is complete.
Okay. I'll look for a motion to accept this application.
Make that motion?
Yes.
All in favor? Is the applicant here and ready to present?
Yes.
Good evening. I'll give a minute, set up the board.
Could you state your names and where you're from?
Sure. My name is Justin Dano. I'm with Granite Engineering. I have with me Jeff Merritt, also with Granite Engineering, and we have Marquis Contracting Group, who's the applicant. So tonight, I'd like to present the proposed fourteen-unit condominium located at the intersection of Endicott Street and White Oaks Road in Laconia, New Hampshire. Tax map 163, block 241, lot 13. The property is 1.7 acres and is currently undeveloped. It's located within the commercial resort district, the TIF district, and the performance zoning overlay district, hence the requirement for the conditional use permit. The project will involve the construction of two three-unit buildings, two four-unit buildings, parking areas, site landscaping, site lighting, and one driveway off White Oaks Road. Parking will be provided by, provided for thirty-one vehicles via seventeen garage spaces, seventeen driveway spaces, and three guest spaces. I'm gonna use this plan. Point things out. You guys have copies of the plans or is this all right? So on the site plan, sheet three, this shows the overall layout, including the main drive entrance off White Oaks. We have a bio-retention stormwater here, and the, this also shows the reconstructed sidewalk along White Oaks Road here. These units have AC condensers located here, 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 and here. Project sign will be located at the intersection of 11B and White Oaks here. We have this area here, this is kind of adjacent to unit one, will serve as a communal reception area for the residents, and this is where they'll get their mail station here. They have a proposed mail station here. If we move on to the next sheet, sheet four, the grading and drainage plan. This plan kind of shows the graded and drainage proposed for the site. We have a series of catch basins down the center line of the driveway that will collect the stormwater and bring it down through catch basins into the stormwater pond here. This is a bio-retention pond, and the outlet of that pond will tie into the existing drainage system that runs down through the property and connects to Endicott, Endicott Street We also are proposing a catch basin at the intersection. This will capture any of the water that's running down the paved gutter line down White Oaks. That catch basin will grab it and put it into the existing system that's on White Oaks Road. We have a few retaining walls in the back of these units, seven through fourteen, that'll help with the grades and also allow patios in the back of these units. And we have a swale here that'll intercept any of the runoff that's coming from up the slope on the off-the-adjacent property down. We'll tie that into the drainage system, and that'll go into the pond as well. We move on to the next sheet, the utility plan. This plan shows the proposed six-inch water main that ties in on Oak Street. We have a hydrant located here, and each of these units will be served with two-inch water service, and they will also be sprinkled. The units will be sprinkled. We've got an eight-inch sewer main that runs down through here, and each of the units will have a six-inch sewer service. Underground power to serve the units will come off an existing pole here, and it will run to each of the units, so all the power will be underground. And finally, each unit will have a thousand-gallon buried propane tank, so there's going to be one that's located here, two here, and one here. Moving on to sheet seventeen, the lighting plan. We're proposing six lights, and all of them will be LED, dark sky compliant, and full cutoff. So we've got six, six lights out here. And then I guess moving on to sheet L1, the lands, one of the first landscaping plan. This plan details both the landscaping and the street trees proposed along White Oaks here, also the plantings in the bio-retention area. It serves as a landscape feature as well. And we have this big island in the center that will be landscaped, and then a series of trees between all the driveways, and then the plantings along the property line with the abutter, with the RV park, so the abutter to the cell. And then finally, sheet A-2.0. Trying to give you a representation of what the units will look like. Shut my phone off. So at this point, I'd like to just send, give it, hand it back to the board, and if you guys have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Discussion a little bit now, Rob?
Sure. Yeah, I think if you have opportunity to ask questions now.
Snow storage. You've got a pretty compact site there. What's your proposal for where you're going to store snow?
I believe we show snow storage area on the, it's probably the site plan. Yeah, sheet three of seventeen. So we've got some areas hatched out here for snow storage. This is probably going to be the biggest area. Kind of makes sense, it's at the end of the driveway, so this area will probably serve as the largest area.
And your dumpsters?
Nope, it'll be totes.
Totes?
Yep.
The wheelie bins like we have around the rest of the city.
I know what they are.
Will they have to come all the way out to White Oaks?
No, they'll have to have private trash.
Private, yeah, private.
Oh, okay, so you're going to have a private, yeah, because this is, these are not going to be city road.
Excuse me?
This is not, your loop is not a city road, so you're going to have private trash?
Yeah.
Collection that's going to come out and pick up these totes?
Correct.
Okay.
I know there was a question at TRC with fires apparatus access. Is that solved?
Yes. We, we added additional hardscaping for the fire truck, and I believe we got sign-off from the fire chief on that, so.
You do have sign-off, okay.
Yep.
Is that around that island?
It was primarily here. See these hatched areas on the site plan?
Yep.
It was those areas.
Originally, that was going to be long?
Yep.
This was, this is on city water, right? So?
Yes.
There's plenty of water access for fire suppression, et cetera. Okay.
Can you give me an idea where the retaining wall that exists right now is compared to that?
Yep. That existing retaining wall is right along the, well, I, there's several retaining walls, but.
The major, the major wall between this property and the campground?
Yep, that's right along this property line right here.
Okay. And square footage approximate on your snow storage is what?
I don't have that.
It just seems like there's a lot of area to plow, with not a lot of area to store your snow. That's my, that's one of my concerns. And the other fear is you've got buried propane tanks that you've got to be aware of when they are pushing the snow.
Yep, yep, and those have been outs, well outside the area for snow.
Can I just add one thing to the snow storage? For the record, I'm Jeff Merritt, I'm an engineer with Granite Engineering. In terms of additional snow storage, you know, it's similar to kind of any other development that you see where there's the perimeter of the parking, perimeter of the driveways, which can hold a series of storm events, right? If you get a really bad winter where there's a lot of snow, it is possible that snow has to be trucked out, just like any other commercial development. And if it wasn't clear, this is a condominium association, so it is operated as an association, so there would be a contractor onboard to not only plow it, but to remove the snow if we got one of those winters. Haven't necessarily had that in a while, but in theory it could happen, so, so we made accommodations for that. Thanks.
And so these look like three-story buildings, or is there one story that's buried kind of in the slope?
Yep, so these will have one story kind of.
Dug in?
Tucked in, yep.
And that's up by the campground?
Yes, yep, those are the seven through fourteen units here.
So they're actually two stories, they're three stories, but one story has got parking, and it's somewhat underground.
Yeah, the first, the main level is kind of in, in kind of the back slope. It's almost kind of like if you imagine like a walkout.
Yeah, yeah, that's a walk.
Where we almost have a garage under.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so the campground will see two stories?
Yeah.
Is my question.
And, and these patios will actually be accessed from the upper level. They'll have stairs that go down to them. You know what I'm saying? Because they're at that higher elevation.
Okay, great.
Any other questions from the board? I guess it's 6:43, I'll open it now for the public hearing. Anybody from the public would like to come up and speak for or against? Thank you. Could you state your name and where you live?
Yes, my name is Ronald Stafford, and I am one of the owners of the White Oaks RV Park, which owns the property behind and abutting the proposed White Oaks condominium development. We have reviewed the applicant's performance zoning conditional use permit application and site plan, and we have several serious concerns regarding its non-compliance with zoning limits and the criteria required for conditional use permit approval under section 235 dot 21 dot 1 dot E of the Laconia zoning ordinance. This project proposes fourteen condominium units on 1.736 acres of land, zoned commercial resort. Under CR zoning, the maximum density permitted is six dwelling units per acre, which allows roughly ten units on this property. The applicant is seeking a forty percent increase in density. Additionally, the proposed buildings have a height of forty-four feet, seven and a quarter inches, while the zoning ordinance caps building height in this district at thirty-five feet. That is nearly a ten-foot or twenty-seven percent increase. These are not minor variances, they represent a major deviation from the zoning ordinance. I would like to beg to differ somewhat with the presentation that was made earlier in terms of the height of the building. The, I believe that the elevations that you're showing here are for the front of the building, and the front of the buildings are four stories tall. The, because of the slope, they are digging the, digging back into that banking to put the four-story, to put the first story of the building, and then there are three stories additionally above that. The first performance zoning criteria requires that a project be well-planned and integrated, compatible with adjacent parcels, and enhancing the overall community. A forty-four foot tall, four-story condominium complex with a steep 1.7-acre parcel surrounded by low-profile recreational hospitality and small residential uses is not integrated with its surrounding in any meaningful, meaningful sense. The surrounding area is defined by small-scale development cottages, RV sites, and resort properties generally under thirty feet in height. This proposal includes a mass and scale that would fundamentally alter the visual and physical characteristics of the neighborhood. Rather than providing a transition between uses, as the applicant claims, this project would impose a dense residential block in an area intended for tourism-oriented, low-intensity commercial and recreational activity. The second CUP criteria requires that negative impacts on traffic, utilities, and municipal services be mitigated. Ten days is not enough time for us to have consultants, to have our consultants review the 126-page stormwater management report submitted by the applicant. We would request additional time to review. Performance zoning also requires appropriate transitions between uses to protect neighboring properties. The site plan includes retaining walls and a stormwater basin, but these are engineering elements, not visual or vegetative buffers. The landscape plan provides a total of eighteen trees along the southern property line approximately eight foot tall as a buffer to forty-five-foot condominiums. This isn't a buffer and fails to meet the conditional use permit criteria for number one and possibly number five. The internal road layout is tight and steep, and the fire apparatus turning diagram in the plan demonstrates minimal clearance. This leaves little margin for safety if vehicles are parked along the loop or if snow accumulation occurs in the winter. The project's design therefore raises questions of adequate emergency access circulation, key conditions under both zoning and fire code requirements. The number eight criteria for a conditional use permit is establishing open space and pedestrian amenities, including usable common land and wide sidewalks. The only open part about the site plan is the retention. There is no usable common land, there is barely enough room for a fire truck to turn around. To summarize, this proposal fails, to summarize, this proposal fails to satisfy multiple performance zoning conditional use standards, including compatibility and integration with adjacent uses, transition and buffering between land uses, quality site planning and architectural design, creation of pedestrian and community connectivity, provision of usable open spaces, and beyond these deficiencies, it substantially violates the underlying zoning code by exceeding both the thirty-five-foot height and six foot, six units per acre density limits. Members of the board, performance zoning was never meant to provide an easy bypass around the city's dimensional and density standards. It is meant to encourage better design within them. This project as proposed does not meet that intent. This project as proposed seeks to overbuild a constrained site with insufficient data, minimal buffering, and multiple unresolved, unresolved code conflicts. Approving this application would not only erode the integrity of the zoning code, but would also set a precedent encouraging future developers to seek similar exceptions without providing corresponding community benefits. For these reasons, I respectfully urge the planning board to deny the conditional use permit as submitted, or require substantial revision to bring the project into full compliance, the thirty-five-foot height limit, the six-unit-per-acre density standard, and the applicable performance zoning and site plan review criteria. If you do not feel compelled to vote against this project today, we would respectfully ask you to table this vote until the next hearing, so that we have time to review the 126-page stormwater management plan. Thank you for your time, your consideration, and your continued commitment to thoughtful planning and zoning in the city of Laconia. If I may approach, I brought copies of my statement that I would like for you to each have a copy of, and I'd like it entered into the public records.
Yep, I just want to hand it to Savannah. Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else in the public would like to speak? Want to up and state your name and where you're from?
My name's Herb Dick. I own 104 Endicott Street, right across the street. I'm worried about the infrastructure, all of this water going through, the city's pipes. Also, I'm worried about parking. I think he said thirty, thirty spots, I think he said? You've got fourteen units, husband, wife, and a kid, or husband, wife, and a friend, that's well over thirty spots. So are they going to be able to have parking spots? And then the height is a big concern. There's plenty of people around there that take this stuff into value, that have bought this land to be able to see the lakes, the trees, et cetera. It's just not fair for me to go put a four-story building next to, you know, next to him. How would they feel? So that's my concern, please take it into consideration.
Anyone else? Having no takers, I guess at 6:51 I'll close the public hearing, and we'll look for the staff report.
All right. I'm not Tyler, but I'll read them through. All right. Findings of fact, the application is complete and consistent with state and city land use The application and site plans were reviewed by the technical review committee at its August 20th, 2025 meeting. After discussion with committee members, it was mutually agreed that the applicant would return for a second TRC review. The updated application and site plans were reviewed by the TRC committee at its September 26th, 2025 meeting. Their comments have been incorporated into the recommended conditions of approval. The board, the planning department recommends that the board accept the application as complete, hold a public hearing, and after the public hearing, discuss and vote on whatever the board chooses. Should the board decide to approve the application, we have recommended conditions of approval. Those conditions are, pre-construction requirements, all conditions in this section must be completed at least two weeks prior to commencing any site work on-site. Plan revisions, plan must be revised and submitted to the planning department to include the following. A plan depicting the proposed unit numbers with their corresponding 911 addresses. Condominium documents must be submitted to the planning department and assessing departments. These documents must include a description of the common area shown on the condominium plans, as well as a copy of the proposed easement for the area. These documents must be recorded at the Ballack County Registry of Deeds at the applicant's expense. 911 addressing, the addresses for all units must be assigned by the Department of Public Works to ensure compliance with RSA 231-133 and 133A. Permits and approval, the applicant must possess all required permits and approvals granted by other municipal, state, federal boards, or agencies. All permits and approvals must be in place prior to signing and recording of final plans in MYLAR. Should any permit and approval be revoked at any time during the project, all work must cease until a new permit approval is obtained. Copies of all permits and approvals must be provided to, by the applicant to the planning department upon request. Final plans in MYLAR. Four final plan sets in MYLAR must be submitted to, reviewed, and approved by the planning department. The MYLAR must be recorded at Ballack County Registry of Deeds at the applicant's expense. Construction requirements. Water specifications, all specifications for municipal water service as required by the water department shall apply to construction, water inspection. The water department must inspect all work and water main and service lines, fire specifications. The applicant must adhere to all specifications as required by the Laconia Fire Department. A fire sprinkler system must be installed in accordance with current New Hampshire State Fire Code and city ordinances. A separate water service line for exterior shut-off to this system is required. Solid waste surfaces. A private trash and recycling service are required. If a dumpster is used, it must be located on a concrete pad and screened from view from all sides. Post-construction requirements, all, all floor plan must be submitted for each unit as provided to the, and provided to the assessing department prior to the issuance of each certificate of occupancy. Impact fees in the amount of $1,831.48 per new dwelling unit must be paid to the planning department in accordance with RSA 67439. At the applicant's, the applicant is exempt from any changes to impact fee rates for five years from the approval date. Should the project not be completed during the exemption period, the applicant must pay any and all increases to impact fees regardless of investment status. As-built, an as-built design application review for each dwelling unit must be submitted to the planning department for review and approval prior to the issuance of each certificate of occupancy and completion date. The project and all associated conditions must be completed no later than October 7th, 2030. If all conditions are not met, nor any extensions, extension application filed with the planning department by the completion date, the approval is no and void.
All right, I guess I'll open it up for discussion along the board.
First question is for Rob. Our average height, are we breaking the thirty-five-foot rule?
So they are requesting a CUP for performance zoning, and in their application on their site plan, they do have a, let me get to it here, on, on sheet three, they'll have in their table of dimensional requirements, and they have what is required by the zoning ordinance, what's existing and what's being provided for. So under building height, they have a proposed maximum height of fifty feet, and they do have the, the units they're looking for. The requirement is six units per acre, and they're looking to go to a total of fourteen units. So those were the two items that they discussed previous when it went first conceptual for the performance zoning.
Okay, to that end, where do we measure height from?
Average grade.
Average grade, so you would take on the, the ones that are on the steepest slope, you would take the top, the bottom, spread an average, and that would be where your height is. That's as much for everyone out there, so they understand how we come to that calculation and, and how we get to it. It's just an average grade. Rob, I, I, it's, it's, it's a lot of sausage for one casing, is my gut feeling, but.
Some people get it.
Well said.
That's, that's, that's the only thing I have to say about it. That's not a yes or a no, I'm just throwing it out there, this is board discussion. That's my comment on this particular project.
So I do want to point out to the board that they are requesting a conditional use permit. The board can, has a significant amount of leeway in what they would like to add or subtract, and they are requesting to deviate from the density and from the height. So that is also within the board's purview.
So I personally, being that I'm, sorry, I am, this is not my area of expertise, so please, please bear with me, but I, I, I feel for the neighbors. I feel that that's exceedingly high, and it's exceedingly tight in there. The fact that they had to take out some grass so that they could hardscape just to get a fire truck in there is, is significant, in my opinion. I don't love the fact that we've gone over the six-unit density, or whatever it is. And so I, I'm not in favor of this myself.
I would agree with Amy, I, I just think there's too much there, and I also want to add, we had a, on a butter, it's requesting some time to review over 120 documents. To me, that's reasonable. It's, this is, this is something that we should take into consideration. Yes, Counselor.
Mr. Chairman, I, I too am concerned about the height, the density, and the neighborhood effect. I understand they, can make application under certain circumstances that might be appropriate. I don't think this is one of them. I think this is a time and a place where, and I don't think anybody here doesn't recognize we need housing, but I don't think we need it crowded in at quite this density on an acre and a half lot.
Yes, Gary.
Mr. Chairman, if you'd be ready for a motion, I would make such a motion to continue this to the next month's meeting. this to the next month's meeting.
I was going to suggest, actually, before, if you want to do that, it might be, it might be worth having the applicant come up and kind of express your concerns and what you would like to see from them, and then you could make a motion and that kind of.
I'd like to hear the applicant's, does the applicant have anything to say to, I just want to address the gentleman that spoke about the parking, just so that you understand, we are bound by state law. We cannot require more than one space per unit. Enough said. That was your legislature, not the City of Laconia. So, if you have an argument with that, then you're taking it up at the wrong venue. Now, but I would like to hear, to the density and the height, I'd like to hear what the developer has to say in response to what, I don't know if you've had a chance to review this, though. This is, this is what the owner of the park next door submitted to us. Have you seen this?
I haven't. That was the first time we've heard it, so we'll digest it as well, just so the board understands, you know, the maximum height versus the, the actual height, the average height is a bit different. So, on that backside relative to where the RV park is, that is the set of units that's kind of tucked into the grade, if you will. So, what we tried to do is when we situated those, we looked at the ridge height relative to kind of the top of the retaining wall height that's right on the mutual property line. Like, our project's a little bit different in that we have, you know, some sort of buffer out there between our property and the property line. Theirs, of course, is right up to that. So that grade that's on top of the retaining wall out there is roughly elevation 600. Our peak of our building is about 29, 29 feet, just under 29 feet from that grade. So I don't want to construe that to be the downhill side of the building, because again, this is tucked into that slope. I just, I want to make sure that, that's clear. So on the backside there is, we tried to keep it under that 35 feet that's in the ordinance as, in the base zoning district, with, you know, trying to have some respect for the neighbors, obviously, with the building height, but also have the ability to build a, a unit that is tall enough to have some square footage for the unit. So I wanted the board to know that. Certainly, we'd be willing to listen to the board and take some input from you. Someone had mentioned that they thought it was too tight because of the fire turnaround. I want to clarify that. We did add some hardscape. The reason was, is we were trying to salvage this internal landscaped island. We didn't want this to be kind of barrack-style, if you would, where you have a very linear site driveway with no character in the middle. So we worked at length with the fire department to find a way to, that they were acceptable to turn around the fire truck while preserving that internal landscaped island, both for the future residents, but also for the traveling public. So I just wanted to make that clear. It wasn't necessarily adding the hardscape because there was nothing else to do, it was adding the hardscape so that we didn't lose, lose one of the nice features on the inside of the project, if you will.
Yes, Amy.
To get to the gentleman's comment about mutual open space, you have none?
Mutual open space?
Green space.
Green space.
Green space.
We, so we do have some green space, we have.
Well, do you have the green space calculation?
Yeah, so the green space calculation is, is just basically a calculation relative to what's pavement versus what's open, and that, that works out. I think what you're, you possibly are asking for is like recreation area for the residents, that kind of thing.
I am.
And so that, again, that leads to what I was saying before, this, this internal landscaped island is a focal point there, and then we also have a area up here that we're putting a retaining wall to flatten out as gathering area. So we have provided it. It is, you know, obviously, 1.7 acre or so parcel of land, so we've, we've tried to provide that. And then we did provide sidewalks for connectivity to the area. There's obviously a lot of things that are walkable in this area, specifically this property is pretty walkable, if you will, to other adjacent areas and parks. So, we think we have that. Obviously, we're here to listen to the board.
But what is your green space on, on this? Do you, I don't find, it, there's just a lot here.
It's 60.1%.
Sixty, yeah, 60%.
60% green?
Yep.
Okay, all right, all right.
Our question, so you, you talk about building height here on the backside toward the retaining wall, but your roof line also pitches up pretty drastically in the front, which doesn't, you know, it'd be different if it fell away as you look down the hill, but with that elevation, you haven't gained anything.
Say that one more time for me.
So, you, you talked about the retaining wall is back here.
Correct.
And it's 29 feet elevation difference here, but as you look out, it doesn't drop off in regards to the rest of the elevation. This roof line is probably a little higher than the back roof line.
Yeah, there is a section of the building, you can kind of see it maybe on the roof plan, but there's a section of the building where the roof pitches in the opposite direction for, you know, some visual appearance, saying that it couldn't all pitch in the other direction. It's something we hadn't thought about.
Did you, and I apologize if you covered it, the height of the retaining wall that's there now?
Which one?
The, the major one between the campground and this property. What's the difference? How far is the ridge line on seven through 14 above that retaining wall?
Above the top of that retaining wall?
Exactly.
Roughly 29 feet.
So roughly 29, 30 feet above the retaining wall that's there now?
Correct. Elevation on top of the retaining wall is elevation 600, and then our, our wall is, excuse me, our ridge is roughly 29 feet above that.
Okay. And the circle that you talked about on that plan there, that common area?
Yep.
Can you give me an idea of dimensions, rough dimensions, please?
Yeah, rough dimensions would be maybe 80 by 30 in this area, and then over here would probably be about 30 by, about 30 by 30. And of course, that doesn't include patios. Each unit would have their own patios, but if you're looking for just, you know, like community space, that those two areas were designated as the real community space.
Thank you.
Yep.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, I, I'm sorry, I have one question for you that really didn't dawn on me while, you know, I had you up here, the, while we had you here the first time. Presumably, these are condos, presumably they can live in them 12 months. Is there a safe spot for a school bus to stop in the event that you do have year-round people with kids?
I don't know that question. We would have to actually probably ask the school board.
I don't know where the closest bus stop is, that.
Well, I'm just saying that the bus presumably would be coming down or up White Oak Road or down White Oak Road and would have to stop someplace to pick kids up if kids were in this. If this is a 12-month inhabited building, then one has to presume that one person could move in there with somebody of school age.
At this corner, maybe.
Well, I'm just saying that that needs to be, since there's a good chance right now we're probably going to table this.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so you want to hear what we're concerned about? I'm concerned about if, if, if the fact that we do need to find a safe spot, that you need to designate in the event that this, like I said, the campground is seasonal, there aren't, there may be kids there i- in the summer, but they're not going to school there. We don't have to worry about school buses and stuff like that. We will if we have a year-round development down here, potentially, that's a potential thing. I personally, as a board member, would feel better if you were to make this a little smaller. I don't know if that works for your financing, I'm just telling you that I would feel better if this was more down to about 10 buildings. I'm not as much worried about the height, I'm, I'm really not. I am concerned with the number of units that you have to put there, and like I said, I would look into, maybe give the school district a call or technical, well, the school department is on the technical review committee, right?
No, they're not.
They're not. Does anybody else think I'm out of my mind?
No, that's.
No, I think.
If you think about that, if the school bus stops coming down White Oaks toward the weird, and kids are coming across the street, you're in a bad spot with traffic turning either way, so.
It's, it's a busy area, but this will be the only major residential thing right in that area that's year-round, and I am just concerned about where a school bus would stop. There's, if there's room for a fire truck, there is also room for a school bus to pull in. I guess what I'm saying when you come back is I would like to see that on any plans that you come back with.
We could check on that for you. Yep.
I don't know if a school bus will go on private property.
They won't pull on a private road.
Okay, well, then that takes care of that, because that I don't know.
I don't know if they do or not, but we'd have to look into that.
I think they would come up from the rotary, probably, take a right on a wheel and stop there, because that's, the kids don't have to cross the street at that point. They're coming on the bus on the door side, on the sidewalk side.
I guess I'd like to see something a little more definitive about that. It's, it's just a concern I have, I.
We'll research it and see what we can come up with.
Little kids getting run over is really not a thing we like.
Fair enough. I'll see you there.
I also feel the density is too, is too much. I, I don't love the height. I, again, I'm sympathetic to the neighbors, and I, I would like to see more, more, I understand you're in compliance, but it, it's not a place where if you do have children, they're not, they're not going to go out and play, you know, they, they can't kick a ball around.
Well.
Okay, we all know what I do for a living, so it's, it, that's just my, my sticking point, is, is I would not approve this because of the, the sheer amount of what you tried to fit in, and I understand why you're doing it, I get it completely, but I, I would not be in favor of it.
Anybody else?
So if you'd like to table it now.
I guess I'd look for a motion to maybe possibly table it?
We'll make a motion to table it.
We've already closed it to the public. Should I not have an opportunity to elaborate on what this gentleman has presented, because I feel there's some discrepancies?
Well, we're tableing it.
We're going to table it.
We're going to table it.
We're going to abide by your request and table it.
Yeah, we're going to table it, and we'll do it again next month.
So, my motion is on the table, just table this, and I think, did you second it?
Connected by Gary?
Yep.
Okay.
Non-divisible.
Non-divisible, so.
All in favor?
All right.
Okay, we'll table this till next month. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, next up is PB-2026-010, 500 Union Avenue, a four-unit multifamily site plan. Rob, is the application complete and ready for acceptance?
It is.
I guess I'd look for a motion. Accepted.
Again, I'll make that motion.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
We have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor? You get them? Thank you, Savannah.
All set?
Okay, is the applicant present? You ready to go?
Yes, sir.
Introduce yourself, please.
Yes, my name's Darrell Dunham, member of the LLC, 500 Union Ave. And I hope you have the documents in front of you, requesting the change of use. So we've worked through the technical review committee for all the appropriate departments who have weighed in, anything that they had any thoughts about, and have complied with any of those questions that they had.
Anybody have any questions? I guess hearing none, I guess I'll open this for public hearing at 7:13. Anybody from the public would like to come out and speak for or against? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing at 7:14, and we'll look for the staff report.
So, findings of fact, the application is complete and consistent with state and city land use regulations. The application and site plans were reviewed by the technical review committee at its September 16th, 2025 meeting. Their comments have been incorporated into the recommended conditions of approval. The recommended, recommended conditions of approval are: pre-construction requirements. All conditions in this section must be completed at least two weeks prior to commencing any site work. 911 addressing. The addresses for all units must be assigned by the Department of Public Works to ensure compliance with RSA 231-133 and 133A. Permits and approval. The applicant must possess all required permits and approvals granted by other municipal, state, federal boards, or agencies. All permits must be, permits and approvals must be in place prior to signing of the final plans. Should any permit or approval be revoked at any time during the project, all work must cease until a new permit or approval is obtained. Copies of all permits and approvals must be provided by the applicant to the planning department upon request. Four final plans, this must be submitted, submitted to, reviewed, and approved by the planning department. All specifications and requirements for municipal water service as required by the water department shall apply to all construction. All specifications, requirements for construction, for, as required by state RSA and Laconia Fire Department, shall apply to all construction, solid waste. Private trash and recycling services are required. If a dumpster is used, it must be located on concrete pad and screened from view on all sides. Residential buffer. A fence or vegetative buffer must be installed along the parking areas abutting residential parcels in accordance with Section 23548 of the City Code, parking delineation. The parking required, the number of parking spaces must be delineated by paint, sign, or other method as approved by the Laconia Planning Department. Post-construction requirements. Impact fees in the amount of $3,481.11 per new dwelling unit must be paid to the planning department in accordance with RSA 67439. The applicant is exempt from any, any changes to impact fee rates for five years from the approval date. Should the project not be completed during the exemption period, the applicant must pay any and all increases to impact fees regardless of investment status. Snow storage. Snow storage and/or removal must be provided by the owner to allow for emergency access, adequate drainage, and use of required parking spaces. Egress restrictions. Vehicles may not back out under Union Ave when, when exiting the property. An as-built design application and review fee for each dwelling unit must be submitted to the planning department for review and approval prior to the issuance of each certificate of occupancy and completion date. The project and all associated conditions must be completed no later than October 7th, 2030. If all conditions are not met nor any extension application filed with the Laconia Planning Department by the completion date, this approval is null and void.
Thank you. I have a question for the applicant, unless somebody can clarify this diagram.
So, I can answer that, so that's him just delineating his parking spaces.
I, I understand that, but this yellow, is that the?
Oh, that's the outline of the lot.
I'm sorry.
It's just the lot outline.
So, yeah, there's two parking spaces outside the lot, is that correct?
Yeah, he's, he's got two, an agreement for two other parking spaces there. He doesn't need them. State law just changed the requirement from to the one spot per dwelling unit, so.
But the lot in question is this yellow boundary right here?
Yeah, and he still meets the, the parking requirement with that. He's just, he had extra spots that he showed on, on his plan.
So my understanding is based on recommendation, there'd be some type of a buffered fence, some type of, on this line, on basically three sides?
Pretty much, three sides is going to have to be, okay.
Okay, that, that helps, because I'm looking at this and I'm trying to figure out.
Yeah, any of the, any of the lot that abuts the residential, in order to meet the parking requirement, it has to be buffered.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
The other one is the egress restriction, where they can't back out on the Union Ave.
Correct.
Can we require some kind of a sign to state that?
You sure can.
Because that's, I mean, that's going to be a tough spot if somebody backs out of there, that's going to be.
Yeah, and when, once you convert to the multifamily, it's in the zoning ordinance that you're, you're not allowed to back out, so that's why it's a condition of approval on there. And if you'd like to assign place there, that is also within your purview to require that.
Just to make people aware.
Yep.
Mr. Chair, my question is, how are they going to turn around if you're parked over here to back, to avoid backing?
Well, that's their problem.
The, the first parking spot, what's he going to do?
The one, the parking spot closest to Union Ave?
Correct.
Got to back out.
Yes, exactly.
I mean, it's breaking the law, so.
Back up, drive around, try and do a K-turn back here and, and drive out? I don't see how. It is going to be tight to try to turn something around in that spot, the way the parking spots are laid out right now.
Well, they're going to have to go forward and make a turnaround to have tags in the lot.
Well, and what's going to happen come winter, because that's going to be your snow storage back there?
Well, if he, and I'm just talking out loud, if you took those two parking spaces that are in the back of the unit there and used the offsite ones.
You could call him up and discuss it with him.
Okay. All right. Could the applicant come back up, and we'll throw some questions at you, I guess? So, you've heard the concerns, so those two parking spots that are parallel to the driveway, the first two, how is somebody going to come out of those and not back out on?
So, the idea is that you'd go in first, turn around like was being discussed, and then park the other way, so that you're heading out towards Union Ave.
So that'll be clearly stated to all the residents?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
And your snow storage would go?
Yeah, straight back. And with his permission, the abutting neighbor behind me, he and I have been discussing options directly behind this property for additional snow and/or turnaround space.
So he doesn't need the buffer?
He still needs the buffer.
Yeah, these are residential rental units, right?
Correct.
How will that work? How do you have a buffer and then move the snow into somebody else's lawn?
So, my understanding is the buffer is from the parking spot, right? There's a distance from the parking spot that it has to be, if I've got that correct.
Right, but I think they're asking you if you are required to have the buffer there, and then you're gonna plow, how are you gonna maintain that buffer area?
Yeah, so the buffer area would not be where the snow would be piled up. So we'd be, the parking distance would be adequately away from where the snow is gonna be pushed. Again, my understanding is the regulation is it has to be five feet from the parking spot that the buffer is needed.
Let me look it up here, and I'll read it to you.
While he's looking that up.
Sure.
That snow storage is proposed right here. What's the grade like there? I mean, we all know snow melt.
Yeah.
And when that snow melts, are we gonna be flooding somebody else's basement?
No, no, there's already a rolling, it's not steep, but it's a, maybe a two-foot change in elevation there.
It drops?
It drops.
It drops off the back?
Correct. Correct.
Towards Messer?
That's right.
And you'll be paving that back parking spot, or are you?
It's already paved, but not all the way back, not all the way back.
In this picture, it looks like it's on grass.
Yeah, though far back is, and there is not a plan to pave it at this time.
Okay.
Landscaping for parking shall meet the definition of green space. Multifamily and non-residential parking areas shall have a landscape perimeter of a minimum of 10 feet in width. The purpose of the perimeter is to provide a buffer from the street and abutting properties for snow, as well as snow storage. So, I think if you're using, if you're, if you're plowing your snow onto your abutters' property, you're not then creating a buffer with that.
Okay.
So you're gonna have to find it.
Yeah.
You'd have to have a different solution than that.
Okay. I think we have it without that, but that was the plan that we've been discussing to make it more useful, which makes a lot of sense to me than a fence, but, yeah.
I guess I would look for a motion. Yes, Gary? So you own the property now?
I do.
It's a single-family house?
Correct.
Okay. I like the idea of getting more rental housing in here. I don't know if it would work with a two-family or a three-family, four. Pretty tight to park four cars in there.
Yeah, that's why I've been making alternate arrangements. There's other opportunities as well with people that are abutters in different spots, which are listed on that plan, also across the street.
That's great, but we need to see four spaces on this plan that are gonna work according to our ordinances. What you negotiate with a neighbor may go away at some point in the future, you know what I'm saying, unless you're actually doing an easement, and we don't get, we're not in the easement business.
He does have the four parking spots on his.
But he does have the four, and they are legitimate with the buffers?
He has to provide a buffer.
Okay.
Which is one of the recommended conditions, that he has to provide the buffer.
Okay.
So.
The elevation on one, it's hard to see it from a top view, but the elevation from one of these puts the parking lot next door above, about six feet above the grade of the house, the bottom of the house. So it's almost got a built-in buffer to begin with. There's also a stone fence, there's a stone retaining wall on the opposite side of that one.
It's a stone.
The house to the north of you is higher in elevation?
The house closer to this direction, pardon me for my compass ignorance tonight. I'm sorry?
North is going towards Lakeport Square.
Yeah, yeah, so the north side, there's a parking lot that's already high above, and then on the other side, the grade drops, so the neighbor on the opposite side is down about six feet with a retaining wall.
You say there's a stone wall towards the back of the property?
No, stone wall in the back.
No, stone, where, is there?
Stone retaining wall.
A stone retaining wall, okay, I just need to make sure it's not a stone wall.
Yeah, on the north, as this gentleman said, north side, there's a concrete retaining wall.
If you look just behind the garage there, you can, you can just barely see it along the battery line.
Where the two parking spaces are coming in with the asterisks?
That's right. That's right.
I do have one question for Rob when, I have no more questions for the applicant, but I'm just waiting and seeing if anybody else does.
Okay. I guess go ahead with your question for Rob.
Rob, this is in the UC zone. Is it possible with a condition that we can limit or put a restriction on this to no short-term rentals? Is that conditionally possible?
So, that is not in the purview of this board to limit him on short-term lodging, because that would be a special exception from the zoning board.
Yeah, with my question.
So that would be, that would be a decision for the zoning board to make.
Yeah, so, okay. All right, just asking.
Okay, you can have a seat, and I think we'll have some more discussion. Thoughts?
I don't see them driving in the back, turning around and facing out. I think it's gonna be a traffic nightmare.
Actually, if you look at the vehicle that's pulling in on this photograph, it would technically hit park cars here.
Yeah, good point. Where are they gonna have space to do a turnaround if there's three cars parked there? And the fourth one shows up? I just can't see them not backing up into Union Ave.
And that's, I know we're limited to the one car per unit, although.
Thoughts?
I mean, I'm not gonna not approve this because the parking is awkward. There's a lot of awkward parking in a lot of places. That's, you know, I mean, it's, it's a lot, but he's shown four legitimate spaces in here, and people know that they're not supposed to pull into Union Ave, and if they do, they do so at their own risk to their legality and creating any accidents, and we have insurance and laws for that.
And the other thing with the two bonus spots that are on the adjoining lot that he has permission for, people may find it's easier to park there than it is in the other spot.
Well, they may, but I'm saying, I, you know, we have to condition it only on what we can do on that lot, you know, negotiations go sideways as far as what happens external to this lot. I mean, I don't love it, but at the same time, I think he's provided us what we need to see in order to give this an approval, at least he has to me. So that's my feeling on this.
Do you see a buffer here?
Huh?
Do you see the buffer?
It's already a house, it's already there, it's already residential, and he just wants to carve it up into more houses, and he's provided four parking spots. That's what we have required him to do by our own ordinances. That it's awkward is not in our ordinances. That's my only argument.
But a buffer space isn't our ordinance.
Buffer space, and he says he has the 10-foot buffer.
He does, but there's no way for a car to turn around and face out. It's not gonna happen, and we're creating a hazard that will be dangerous hazard.
If I lived there.
Four different apartments.
If I lived there and had that first space, I'd pull up along the sidewalk and back in, then I wouldn't have to back out.
Or park at the house next door.
That's true, too.
You know, I'd like to see four apartments, you know, get rid of a single-family house and have four new apartments, but like we heard already tonight, it's a lot of sausage.
A lot of sausage, not a lot of casing, right?
This is gonna, this is gonna live on like Peter Rudens at Malfunction Junction.
Peter Rudens, no. I mean, like I said, I said my piece. I don't love it, but at the same time, he's provided us legally with what we need and what we've asked for in our ordinance. That's my point.
So we're requiring them to have this, that they can't back out. What is it, what happens if they do? What's the enforcement behind that?
Well.
There's nothing.
There's, there's. The planning department, the planning department is not gonna sit out there and review people backing out.
But if someone, okay, so let's say there's an accident, and there's obvious proof behind what's happened, there's nothing that can be done. We've approved it and it's done, even though it was a condition of approval.
Unless you're gonna have somebody out there every day looking at.
And I'm not, I know that.
Well, if there's a contention about who's at fault, and this is supposed to be not backed out of. Right, it's clearly stated as a condition. It could be an issue as to who gets covered by insurance and who has to pay.
Not could be, will be.
Yeah, but, you know, I mean, whoever's gonna live there is gonna have to take all these things into consideration if they decide to rent one of these apartments. I'll be honest with you, I've lived in bigger cities and rented apartments with less parking.
Me, too.
Yeah, so.
Guess I'm looking for a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve PB-2026-010, 500 Union Ave with the conditions that were read into the record by Planner Ma.
Second? Second. All in favor?
Discussion marks the vote.
Go ahead.
I'd love seeing four new apartments, but we're creating a can of worms here. I think in this instance, it's not the right thing to do. It's not right for Union Ave, you know, because it's good for Laconia to get four apartments, it's not right for this property. So, just think of that before we make our vote, please.
Are we ready to vote?
Mm.
More discussion?
More discussion?
Hmm?
No more discussion.
Okay, I guess we'll take a vote to approve. Four in favor, two against, motion passes. Okay. Thank you. You're approved. Next up is PB-2026-011, 460 Union Ave, commercial site plan for vehicle display and parking area. We need, initially, we need to vote on a waiver for the drainage analysis and a plan. Correct, Rob?
That's correct.
What does that mean?
What does that mean?
So they're required to submit one, required to submit one with their plan to be a complete application. They requested a waiver to not submit one, so in order to accept the application as complete, you need to approve the waiver.
What's the basis for?
Yeah, what's the basis for the request?
I'll let the applicant explain it to you. They're the ones requesting the waiver.
Okay.
So there, the proposed work does not increase or change the green space area on the site? There's no increased impervious area, there's no anticipation that there'll be any additional runoff as a result of the project, because there's gonna be a similar land cover for the site. It's simply going from rooftop impervious to a parking lot impervious. Runoff patterns are the same under the proposed conditions as exist today. There are no known stormwater issues on the site.
Okay, go ahead.
So, if I understand you correctly, if you take that structure down, you are only paving the footprint of that structure?
The structure is in odd shape, so it will be the same square footage. It will not be the exact same shape as the structure. If you look at, this is the structure footprint, so there's gonna be a portion here where this portion of the structure is gonna end up being a grass area, and then kind of like, yeah, this, this grass area here probably kind of squares, squares off. This is the existing edge of pavement here, the driveway that goes along the right side of the building. Basically, you know, we're maintaining that edge and gonna straighten that out. So, again, where there's rooftop that's beyond that edge, that's gonna be grass on that small portion where you can kind of see that overhang of roof.
Is there any green space on that lot now?
Yes.
And that's gonna stay about the same?
Yep.
Okay.
So we said in the precedent, we're granting that waiver for drainage? No, we've done them before.
I think I remember one.
And they've already got the approval to tear down the building?
Correct. They've got what, Amy?
The approval to tear down the building.
Yeah, you know, just to try to make everybody happy. I did run this up Warren Hughes's ladder, just to see how he felt about the significance of this building, and he really didn't believe that there was any historical significance. He says it's an unusual building, but not historically significant, so if that makes anybody feel any better, I know we've all looked at it for a very long time, made see it through different eyes, but I will defer to him on what is historically significant and what is not.
Oh, I was referring to the waiver they already received.
But I know a lot of people are thinking that, if they read about it in the paper and stuff.
With regards to the waiver, it's something we've done typically where when we're not anticipating any change in the stormwater runoff for the site, it essentially saves the applicant some time and effort in terms of engineering to just provide what the city typically requires for a drainage study.
So I guess I'll look for a motion to.
I'll make that motion to approve the waiver for application of PB-2026, waive the requirement for a drainage report.
Second? Second, Gary? All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you. Now, Rob, are we gonna have them present?
Now you can vote on it for it to be a complete application.
All right, okay, so now the application is complete, and we'll have to vote to accept the application. I'll, I guess I'll take a, do I need a motion on that? Okay, take a motion.
Second.
Second, okay. All in favor? Complete, thank you. And now we'll have the applicant present.
Nick Schedule from Duboy and King. As I mentioned, Chris Irwin from Irwin Motors, this is a former Harris Furniture building. The proposal is to demo the building and create vehicle display area within that same footprint. The parcel is directly abutting the Hyundai dealership, so presumably that's the, the use will be for vehicles that are associated with that dealership. There are two existing driveway cuts off Union Ave. Those would be maintained in the same manner. See the layout for the parking. As I mentioned, we're gonna maintain that same edge of pavement and continue it and then square it off. We've shown a display area and then some parking, which is calculated based on the square footage of display area. Some, I guess one unique aspect of this is that there is an easement, this is the public works maintenance garage, I'll call it. So like back here is where the sand, like residents can go get sand and stuff, they can kind of drive around that building. If you bend back there, you'll see that there is a, an access way to come onto our property here. There is an easement, a 20. There is an easement, a twenty foot wide easement through the city's parcel to provide access. Think we gave you a copy of the easement in case you wanted to read it. We've shared that with DPW. I don't think we really had any comments other than I think they were wanting to make sure that it wasn't something that was generally used by the public and kind of like more or less for, you know, maybe deliveries or like a, you know, not on a regular basis. But I think that's accurate to, to what's gonna happen on the site. There's not really any plan for people to drive through and cut through here. You know, uh, I guess it's kinda straightforward. There was, there was a, a comment from staff at TRC regarding the screening, the buffer, I guess. The parcel next door was most recently used in a commercial basis.
Barber shop?
Yeah, it was a barber shop. So we weren't a hundred percent sure if, if that applies at this point, whether the buffer is, is required because I'm not sure if it is residential or not at this very moment.
The use of the other property wasn't residential, so it didn't require the buffer.
Okay.
There is vegetation along, along that boundary and the intent would be to maintain that vegetation.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I think that's my spiel, I guess.
Nick, I'm just curious, what the, the back section that's going into the DPW lot?
This?
Because, no, the paved section, coming, coming down a little bit on the page. Why is it so wide and what do you plan to do with that section there?
So.
Is that just additional parking or is that?
Again, this is, we identified this as display area. We included that as the display area. This is a gravel area that's pretty overgrown at this point, but I wanted to leave it at, I wanted to kind of assume the, the maximum amount of display area in terms of parking calculations. So, you know, the, the intent isn't to pave this portion that's existing gravel, but potentially it could get cleaned up and they could end up storing some inventory there. And again, you know, this area because if you look at the existing site, it's pretty wide in here. So this was, I think, customer parking when they needed parking for the furniture store. So we basically maintain that as a paved area. Probably would not be parking. It would be display.
So actual parking?
Yeah.
Cause you're displaying cars being parked, right?
Parking.
Yeah, you're doing parking for the parking.
Parking for the parking?
Yeah.
Yeah. Nick, any plans that you know of to merge the lots? Are you gonna keep them as separate lots? You don't know?
Keep them separate.
You're gonna keep this separate?
As they are.
Okay, keep your options open?
They're, they're, yeah, and there's, there's a small strip of grass. It's two or three feet wide that divides the properties and.
Okay, well, I'm just asking. I mean, once you merge them, you know, then it obviously takes an act of Congress to unmerge them.
Yeah, there's no plan to merge them. You know, the, the utilities that go to the building now will be cut and capped. We did have a discussion with the Water Works about typically when you abandon a water service, the Water Department would have you go back to the main and discontinue it at the main. We are proposing to not do that with the, uh, basically the, the idea would be that we don't wanna limit the future use of the, the site and have to do that and come back and tap it again. There are rules and requirements that Water Works are gonna enforce as a result of maintaining the curb stop. Essentially, it, uh, it reverts ownership of that service all the way back to the main, to the property owner and not to Water Works. So we're, we're prepared to take that.
So does that mean you have to go in front of the Water Commission?
No.
No?
No, it's just a, a, it's kinda their standard specification for that situation.
Okay, so we don't need anything, Rob, in our verbiage about the Water Commission or any, okay.
I think there's a standard condition that talks about.
They have a standard condition there for the water specifications.
And he's signed, I think he's already signed a form.
Yeah, there's a form that I've signed.
Oh, all right. I just wanna make sure we're all square with them. I wouldn't want the Water Department thinking we're cutting them out of the equation.
Done.
Chris, I wonder if the, you would be willing to consider giving up the access in the back. Best laid plans of my, some men frequently go astray. And I understand what you think you wanna use it for. I would submit to you, once people see it, the, the advantage before was the house was there and people didn't notice that right away. Not asking you to give it up. What I'm asking you to do is agree that it can't be used with a gate or something.
To gate it off?
Yeah.
I, I hadn't considered that. I think that at least the plan that I have would be to, to have inventory so you wouldn't wanna, you wouldn't really easily be able to access that if you wanted to, to, to go up and down it, if that's what you're suggesting.
Yeah, is there any potential fire ramifications to that too, if we were to gate that access? I don't know. Can you get one of those car delivery things up through the back there?
Irving Street is probably
No, no.
five hundred feet away or less and is a cut through. Is there already a cut through technically between?
People use it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that old one, yeah, I know that one, yeah.
But next door, I, I was thinking.
Yeah.
Is that private? I thought that one was, was public, the one coming off of Bisson Ave.
So that, that is on our property. So people are cutting through.
So that, that is private, okay.
Yeah.
Maybe like a temporary, uh, temporary barricade of some sort?
Yeah, I, I, I'd like something done to, I mean, he just said people are going through. Hate to admit this, but I've gone through once or twice.
I can say I tried to go through today and I wasn't able to because there were cars parked there.
Well, and that's a good thing, but.
So I think that's probably the, I think that's his plan so that it wouldn't.
Maybe that's the answer, is you just use cars.
Yeah, I mean, the cars are gonna probably block it so we don't, you know, someone will make that mistake once.
You want something more permanent?
You will make that mistake once.
What happens if they don't? I, I mean, if we're getting a guarantee that there will always be a car parked there, in black and white, you say that, I'll, I'll.
I just don't know what the, I don't know what the advantage would be for somebody to, to utilize that as an access point. When, when there's a hundred feet away, there's, there's a, there's another road that is more. I don't, I don't think that people even know about that or that there, I didn't, and, and I was right next door.
I didn't, and I knew all about the other one.
But like he said, there was a building near, so.
Yeah.
So I had no idea that the property, even when I bought it, I didn't know that the property had access.
Would you consider some type of a gate that you could open and close as you needed if you needed to get through there? But it would be closed so that it wouldn't be a cut through?
We could look at doing that if that's.
I think that that would solve the question at hand as far as people zipping from Mesa Street to Union Ave by way of this cut through. And if there was a gate that was closed, then that would alleviate that.
I think one of the other things is, like I said before, it's behind the house. Now it's gonna be visible. So if you can do a gate, if we can add a requirement for a gate, I'm, I'm with you on all the rest of it.
So it, it might be just worth having, I don't know if we wanna pursue a gate there. I, I think there's some legal language in the easement that we're, you know, probably should not be restricting access to.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, what if we were to, what if he were to post it not in a public way?
A locked chain, I mean, a.
Well, yeah, but that's.
A locked chain could probably.
That's just the nature.
I accomplished the same thing.
Yeah, I, I.
A chain's fine.
Even a plastic chain.
Yeah.
Even a plastic chain.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, probably not, but someone might try to, I guess.
Somebody tries to do something.
I mean, it's, I, I think it's probably a relatively inexpensive solution to, to do a chain.
Yeah, and I'm fine with that, but chain would be fine with.
Yeah, and I, I think after a period of time, if anybody was to try, become a deterrent to the point where, why, why would I wanna do this if it's gonna just take longer?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The landscape between the two driveways, do you have a plan for that?
It's, uh, the plan would be to maintain the existing vegetation that's there. I'm, I'm not necessarily great with plants, but I do have the old site plan that shows some lilacs there. I think there are lilacs there now. There were some maybe less desirable plants there as well, like a, kinda looked like a sumac of some sort. But basically the existing vegetation is, is what we would try to maintain.
Looks like hosta to me, yeah.
Right, there may be some hosta.
Yeah, maybe.
With the change of use, aren't street trees?
For some reason, they got hostas in there.
There's some yellow flowers.
They're not proposing, I, that's a, that's probably a, a, a push of, they're not really actually changing really a site plan, really. I mean, the reality is they could just demo the building and leave it gravel and not have to come before us and not do anything. So it, it's really, uh, and they're not putting in a, they're not putting in any streets or, or sidewalks or anything, so there's, I don't know. I mean, if you wanna, I don't think there's a really a requirement for them since they're not really doing anything that would push for that, but if you wanna.
Well, I remember when Canton changed the use.
But they, they were creating, they were doing a, on a vacant lot, they were creating a whole parking lot and that's when they requested the waiver for the street trees. This is, you're, you're paving, uh, what's gonna be a gravelled area.
Tearing down paradise.
Yeah.
Yeah, pretty much, yeah.
Thank you, Joni.
Thank you, Joni, right.
Okay, it's a simple question, that's all.
Okay, I guess we're all set. At seven fifty-one, we'll open the public hearing. Anybody would like to comment on this application, for or against? Come on up. Seeing none, at seven fifty-two, we'll close the public hearing. Staff report?
Uh, we voted to approve the waiver, uh, with the waiver. It, in accordance, uh, it is consistent with, um, current land use regulations, um, city and state. The applicant and site plan were reviewed by the technical review committee at the September sixteenth meeting. Their comments have been incorporated to the recommended conditions of approval. The applicant must possess all required permits and approvals granted by other municipal, state, federal or federal boards or agencies. All permits and approvals must be in place prior to signing of the final plan should any permit or be revoked at any time during the project. All work must cease until a new permit approval is obtained. Copies of all permits and approvals must be provided by the applicant to the planning department. Four final plan sets must be submitted to, reviewed and approved by the planning department. All specifications and requirements for municipal water services required by the water department shall apply to all demolition and site work. For the residential buffer, if there was a residential buffer, a fence or drainage must be installed along the display areas of that abutting residential parcel. All parking spaces must be delineated by paint or sign or other method approved by the planning department. Snow storage must be removed from, uh, snow storage must be removed from the lot in order to allow for all drainage structures to function and required parking spaces to be utilized. The project and all associated conditions must be completed no later than October seventh, twenty thirty. If all additions are not met nor any extension filed with the Laconia Planning Department, the application in its approval shall be null and void.
Thank you. I guess I'm looking for, any more discussion, I guess? Looking for a motion?
I'm motioning to approve PB two zero two six minus zero one one as presented with the waiver and with the conditions of approval offered by the planning director.
Second? Gary? All in favor? Who's abstaining or against?
I'm abstaining, yes.
Thank you. Motion passes? Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
For the public hearings? Still a lot of people here. Next up is PB two zero two six dash zero one two, three dash seven Riverside Court. Conventional subdivision creating a single family and multifamily lot. Is the application complete and ready for acceptance?
It is.
Uh, look for a motion to accept the application?
Second.
Second? All in favor? Dale, Gary?
Have you guys been a vote?
You in favor?
Okay, is the applicant ready to present? Could you state your name and where you're from?
Good evening, Mark Kandemetracki, licensed surveyor from Laconia. I'm representing.
Excuse me, Mark, I gotta recuse myself from this one.
Okay.
I just realized something.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'm representing the, the applicant, Laconia Properties LLC. They're looking to take an existing property that has two separate distinct uses, a, a four unit multifamily structure and a single family home and essentially subdivide the lot into two separate properties. A four unit multifamily home on one lot and a single family home on the, on the additional lot. Effectively, there is no change to the property. The only change will be that a new boundary line is drawn in between the two structures. There's gonna be no change to parking, no change to the use, no change to utilities, no additional units, et cetera. We did receive variances for density, for the floor space, for the multifamily structure. We also received a variance for setbacks, for the, for the side setback, for the, the two structures to create the new property line as well as for parking in the, in the setbacks. Again, everything is already existing. There's gonna be no additions, no changes, no deviation from, from the way the, the property is currently operating.
Any questions on the board? Okay, I guess we'll open it up now for, at seven fifty-six, I'll open it up for a public hearing. Anybody here to speak for or against? Seeing no takers, I'll close the public hearing at seven fifty-seven. And we'll have a staff report.
Uh, the findings of fact, the application is complete and consistent with state and city land use regulations. The zoning board of adjustment granted the property a variance from lot size, density and setbacks at its August eighteenth, twenty-five meeting. The application and site plans were reviewed by the technical review committee at their September sixteenth meeting. Their comments have been incorporated to the recommended, recommended conditions of approval. Those recommended conditions of approval are plan revisions. The plan must be revised and submitted to the planning department to include the following. Correct a butter information for four two five dash four four dash seven four and four two five four four seventy seven. Permits and approvals. The applicant must possess, possess all required permits and approvals granted by other municipal, state and federal boards or agencies. All permits and approvals must be in place prior to signing and recording of the final plans of mylar. Should any permit or approval be revoked at any time during the project, all work must cease until a new permit or approval is obtained. Copies of all permits and approvals must be provided by the applicant to the planning department upon request. Final plans of mylar for final plan sets of mylar must be submitted to, reviewed and approved by the planning department. The mylar must be recorded at the Belup County, Belup County Registry of Deeds at the applicant's expense. Water specifications, all water specifications and requirements for municipal water services required by the water department apply to this subdivision. Completion date, the project and all associated conditions must be completed by no later than October seventh, twenty thirty. If all conditions are not met nor any extension application, application filed with the Laconia Planning Department by the completion date, this approval is null and void.
Thank you. Discussion among the board?
So we've got one small lot with two buildings on it. We're gonna make two small lots.
Yeah, so they just, literally, there, there's a multifamily structure and then the.
Build property really well.
Yeah, and they're just subdividing off the single family.
There's separate water meters on this, this single family house from the other.
Yep.
I think I remember when there was something else in the front.
Yeah, I think, um, when we, um.
That building isn't really old, the four unit building in Church Street.
I don't know how old that one is.
Maybe around forty, fifty years old.
Oh, still new.
Yeah.
Barely broken in.
Relatively sticky.
More discussion?
About nineteen hundred.
There you go. The, the four unit building? I don't think it's that old.
Is that two fifty-four court?
No, Union Avenue. I mean, it's Church Street.
Why am I on three Riverside Court? Yeah, yeah. Yeah, yeah, three Riverside Court.
Riverside Court is by the Church Street Bridge.
I'm, I'm, I'm getting a real spitty wheel right now.
It's by the Church Street Bridge.
Doesn't look like it's the one. Anyway, go on. Anyway, go on.
I think, I think, George, you know, I built that four-unit building back in the seventies.
Any more discussion? I guess I'm looking for a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve application PB two zero two six dash zero one two for three dash seven Riverside Court with the conditions and approval presented by the staff report.
I'll second that motion.
All in favor? Thank you. Which approves, thank you. Rob, do we wanna bump our zoning amendment?
Yeah, might be worth it so that people...
So we can do the presentation?
Yeah, we can do, we can do presentation if that's what you'd like.
Next up, we're gonna do a presentation, conceptual review, it's PB two zero two six dash zero one four, three five eight Roller Coaster Road, conceptual review of an eighty-five unit campground. Come on up.
Hello, Larry Chase, I'm here to just kinda get some answers and ask some questions about the property at three fifty-eight Roller Coaster Road. It was previously approved in the nineties for a campground, the exact same proposal that I have. I went through the plan and looked it over and highlighted the actual campground roads. The plan that you guys have, I made some bigger ones because it was, the small ones hard to really see what's going on. There's a ton of topography on this, it's a really nice plan, but it's confusing when you look at it. The difference between back in the nineties and now, there's town sewer out on the road, I'm sure you guys are aware of that. And there's a house about two hundred and fifty feet back from the actual road, which I'm proposing that, and it's actually on the plan, in the same spot where the gentleman built the house, is where the office and the store would be. The nice part about this plan is, it's off the road quite a bit, so there's really not any visual other than a sign out front and widening the entrance. What else do I have here? All the sites are actually numbered. There was an area in the center that previously would have been used for a septic system. I'm proposing cabins in that space right there. Pool on site, that's drawn on the plan as well, bathhouse, parking for ten cars in front of the bathhouse, plenty of parking down front in front of the store. And I think the most important thing is just that it's off of the street, quite a distance. The property is, I think it's a couple thousand feet, it's a little over two thousand feet deep. And the elevation from the back of the property down to the street, there's only a difference of about thirty-five feet in the topography, so it's relatively flat, it works out well for a campground. And that's why I'm here, kind of a retirement thing I wanna do. So, I think it really works well, like I said, it was approved in the nineties through the town and through the state, and they did a pretty nice plan on it, so there's really not a lot of changes I would make to this, and I'm just here to see what you guys think of the proposal. I've got a bunch of these, if you guys wanna look at the larger plan, I mean, it's pretty nice.
I'll open up.
Are there any wetlands on this?
Not a lot of wetlands, and they're delineated as well.
I think it would depend on...
Can you elaborate a little bit about the mix of camping facilities?
Say that one more time.
I heard you say something about cabins, you're looking at RV sites?
Yep, so these are all... Yep. So I'm proposing eighty-five RV sites, and they're all numbered on the existing plan. And then, in addition to that, in that center open space, which was going to be used for the leaching system, which was pretty extensive, that's where I was gonna do six cabins on one side and six cabins on the other. And I actually have a plan of those as well, I think I sent that up, but I have more as well. We pass around a couple more of these.
And would this be like an RV park where people bring in their RVs, leave them there over the winter, and it would be open from May fifteenth to October fifteenth?
This would be seasonal, mid-April to mid-October perhaps. I don't know if anybody else wants to...
The RV sites like to drive in and back out, or does it drive through?
Couple of different plans on there, so there are some pull-throughs, and there are some, and the square footage on the sites are quite large. And on that plan, it actually gives you the square footage of each RV site. And they're like seventeen hundred square feet upwards to twenty-five hundred to three thousand square feet. So it's pretty spacious in there. And the parcel is forty acres, so it spreads out nicely. If you look at the bottom of the plan, that's where it gives you your square footage of your sites. So for instance, like, you know, site five is twenty-five sixty on the square footage, and then they all vary, but they're all upwards, you know, they're all above, let's see, the seventeen sixty is probably the smallest site.
And all of your sites will have water and sewer?
Sewer, water, yep.
Electric and water and...
Fifty amps, sewer, water.
Fifteen amp, okay.
All sites would have sewer as well?
Yep.
Do you have city water up here too?
There is city water that I can obtain, I just have to put in a proposal, it's not far down the road.
And is the sewer already?
The sewer is in front of the property, correct.
Wasn't sure where it stopped.
I remember when this came before the proposal, what is your plan for sidewalks?
Uh, yes.
The campground is, like I said, quite a bit off of the street, so I really didn't put any thought into sidewalks, but good question. I mean, it's down Roller Coaster Road quite a ways, I don't know, maybe a mile? Yep.
So what is the frontage distance on Roller Coaster Road?
The frontage on Roller Coaster Road is, looks like eight hundred and sixteen feet.
Did you mean a sidewalk on Roller Coaster, or did you mean a sidewalk within the...
No, I meant a sidewalk on Roller, that was, when this plan came before, the same plan, that was a requirement from the owner of this property right now, that he put in a sidewalk, but it was further than just the frontage of his property, and that didn't make it viable for him to do this. Are you aware of that?
No, I just, I was under the impression that it got approved and state approved it as well. So that's where I, that's what I hear about it.
Are there any sidewalks on Roller Coaster Road?
No, I'm assuming state approval, would that infer alteration drain?
For the sidewalks?
No, I'm talking about just the whole disturbance.
They could, yeah.
So one other thing with this piece of property is all the, I'd say, a majority of the roads that are highlighted here for the camp roads, they're all old logging roads, which I thought was kinda cool. When they laid this out, they actually laid it out to the existing roads. There's a stone wall that runs through the middle here, and you can still see it on the plan, and it's still there when I walked the property. And all the logging roads just have small saplings, but it's actually a pretty nice layout, they spent some time doing it.
Would there be anything for you there to re-log, or is that not enough time?
Not a lot of big stuff in there, yeah.
Not enough time?
Yeah, and I, my proposal would be to keep it as wooded and as cozy as I could. There'd be some open areas near the pool, and, you know, the cabin area would be kind of an open field area.
So you are gonna have the pool?
Yeah.
Same location?
Yep, same location.
And is there like a clubhouse and...
And there's, you know, there are some wetlands on this, but they're very minimal, and obviously, I would have them redelineated. Actually, this property has been delineated quite recently, and I'm in contact with the surveyors that did that, and I'm gonna work with them because they just did the entire thing to that housing development that got shot down. So there's a really defined plan in place right now.
One concern that, if I may, one concern that I would have is knowing right now it's a residential piece of property, the entrance width to that driveway, being an RV'er and seeing what happens at some RV parks, getting in and out, if you had two fifth wheels, one coming in, one trying to get out, the width of that driveway, it would be a mess.
I think when you look at the proposal here, I think it kinda has a dogleg off the side, so it kinda separates north, I don't know, what the, north and south bound, or whatever you'd wanna call it. And it is pretty wide coming in there now, but I do propose to, you know, widen it, make it a lot nicer. Maybe a sign in the middle of the two, you know, one going this way, one going that way. So if people are coming up from the one oh six side, they can come in, take a right, and coming down the other way, they can come in.
Is it your plan to, like, have people bring your RVs there, and then you'll, they can keep them there all winter?
Well, there's a lot of...
Are they gonna have to bring them in and out every year?
There's a lot of discussion about...
How much transit business are you gonna do?
So that's called a seasonal site.
It is, yes.
And people, and they're very popular, and people like them, and anything up around here, if you do some research, you can't get any of those, because there's a list, and my thoughts on that, I would probably propose like fifty seasonal sites, and then I want some in-and-outs. The good thing about the seasonal sites is less traffic, less impact, and it's easier actually for the owner of the campground, because, you know, you set, you have rules, I'm a very neat, tidy guy, the place would have to be, you know, I'm a builder. The decks have gotta be done right, the screen rooms are good, no junk, you know, and not old this and that. So I'd be real meticulous on my plan of what you can have in there. And then also, the seasonal's, like I say, not a lot of in-and-out, and it's just guaranteed, and the people, they like that, you know? I'm going to the same spot every year, I can go down and get a valet boat slip, now I've got a place to stay, I can run my boat on the lake. Very little impact to the, you know, school systems and fire and all that, it's seasonal, so it's kinda, it's kinda a nice way to go when you're developing a big tract of land, in my eyes, you know, I think it's, I think it's a nice, it's a nice piece of property for campground.
Rob, I have a question for you. If there are seasonal sites, is there a requirement on, is there taxes paid by the owners of those? Obviously, he owns the land, but if I put my RV there, I know when I had a seasonal site in Wells Main, I paid a bill, a tax bill, to Wells Main for the shed and the deck and the value of the RV.
Yeah, I think, I think so.
Yep, the assessing developer does, they do that.
Yep. So again, it is, it's some income, and I've heard that as well, and they come out and assess all of that. I'm not sure how the sewer works on that, they would have to figure out a price on that, that was one of my questions, but I'm sure we can get that answered, you know, it's seasonal, and if the water gets brought into the property, it would be done by the, you know, the water volume, they just do a calculation for the in-and-out.
I'm concerned of your understanding of retirement.
So is my wife.
Can you give me the width of the entrance? I can't read it, I apologize.
Yeah, it is hard to see.
It looks like something says fifteen feet down there, but I can't see what...
Yeah, but that's the, I think that's the diameter of that pipe that's down there, that's a fifteen-inch culvert pipe. So if I were to guess, I mean, that entrance to that property now, without me even touching it, I think it's probably thirty feet at its widest point, and then it graduates into probably twenty feet in width, and there's grass on either side, so it's actually a pretty large entrance going in there, and I would, you know, make it whatever it needed to be.
It's probably, if you just roughly scale it off the scale on there, it's probably not, it's less than thirty feet wide, according to that print.
On the gravel part of it?
On, yes, and that's not, and the dogleg is even there.
Yeah, because the roadways are defined as twenty feet in width, so down there at the outside curb, it's probably twenty-five to thirty feet. Yep, and all the roads are drawn at twenty feet. So you can pass, so two cars can pass. And it's got, it's got a pretty good layout, the arrows going in depict kinda the layout and how you get in and out of the campground.
But to reinforce Dave's comment, as somebody who's tried to pull in or out of a campground with a fifth wheel, all it takes is that guy who just bought it, doesn't know how to drive it, it's a bad day.
You've gotta have the right entrance to this property without a doubt.
If I may?
Yep.
One of my concerns is, if you look to the east of this, you get a pretty sharp corner right there with guardrails.
Sightline.
You can see those guardrails, there's been touch by many vehicles. Is there any possibility, and I'm just asking, that that entrance might be moved further west, away from those guardrails?
It could possibly be.
For sightline purposes.
For sure.
That's a concern that I have.
Definitely not, it's got plenty of footage there. I would, I would be open to moving it any direction, absolutely. And I don't know that road that well, I've been down it a bunch of times, looking at properties and stuff, but if it shifted, I would be fine with that.
Roller Coaster is known for having a few crashes.
Well, you know, that was, that was why I asked whether they're gonna be primarily seasonal sites or transit sites, because I would prefer to see more seasonal sites and less, less traffic.
Yeah.
To be honest with you, thirty-five in-and-out sites with RVs on Roller Coaster Road with fifth-wheelers, that's a lot of movement, once you, you know, that's why with the seasonal sites, and that will be easier for you, because I worked at a campground.
Oh, absolutely, it's much easier, yeah.
They're a lot easier for the seasonal sites.
Yeah.
They got their drama, but they're easy. And, but with that being said, that's, you know, those fifth wheels going up and down Roller Coaster Road, which, as Rob has mentioned, is not known for its safety purposes anyway.
Where did it get the name of Roller Coaster Road, does anybody know?
I think that's pretty obvious.
Yeah.
But...
I mean, I even liked the name that was proposed on this, was the Roller Coaster Road Family Campground. It's got a, it sounds pretty good.
Well, like I said, my, you know, my only concern for the abutters would be constant continual RV traffic. If you were to set it up where you had primarily seasonal sites, you wouldn't have that much movement, except for perhaps people moving out in the fall and people moving in in the spring, and that would limit...
Less campers, sure.
And it would also limit the weight load on that road, which, by the way, is a city road, but this is, you're here for our opinions. That's my opinion on campgrounds out there.
And the seasonals are, they're easier.
More seasonal, less transit, you know, what you give up in money, you'll gain in peace of mind.
Yeah.
One other concern that I do have, and you said you're not that familiar with the road, I live within a half a mile from the intersection of Roller Coaster and Parade.
Yep.
That's a challenging intersection.
I've heard that, yeah.
And if you're, whether you're pulling north or you're pulling south, if you have thirty-five feet of whatever behind you, I just want you to keep it, it's definitely a concern.
Yeah, it's a tough spot. Now, they have a flashing light there, have they ever, they don't?
The other end has an actual traffic light.
Yeah.
The end that I'm talking about...
Have they ever considered putting lights at those intersections?
If a campground of this size went in...
Yeah.
Yeah, the problem is, it's a state highway.
I mean, it would be helpful for people getting off a Roller Coaster Road, for sure.
It would be helpful whether you're driving a motorcycle.
Exactly.
Volkswagen, or falling in here.
Hundred percent.
Okay, good. But that's not gonna be the case, a lot of people are gonna be coming off ninety-three, they come across, they're gonna, it puts them on Parade Road, and now they have to, it's, the ideal would be everybody goes in through Endicar Street North, but that's not the way it's gonna be.
Yeah, it's probably gonna be what?
That's why I'm saying more seasonal and less transit.
GPS tells them to come across Pickle Pond Road.
Yes, it does.
I don't wanna be fun with a fifth-wheeler.
With your fifty-foot camera.
On one oh four. And it tells you to pick from Meredith Center to Pickle Pond, and then...
It's an easy negotiation.
Like I said, I would just like to see a limited, as little traffic addition to Roller Coaster Road, especially...
And I mean, I don't...
And I never even thought of what Dave brought up, which is a great point, is that intersection at Roller Coaster Road and Parade Road is a nightmare, no matter how, I mean, you can pull out of there with turbo. You can pull out of there with turbo and still get whacked from someone coming from Meredith.
I use that a lot.
It's a bad spot.
You know, that's, you know, when...
On your proposed seasonal sites, would they have their own electric heater?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep.
Have you been, you haven't talked to any utilities at all, because...
I have not.
I can tell you from a exutility guy's standpoint, underground transformers are in tight demand.
Yeah, my electrician.
It's like three years plus.
Yeah, there's a lot of, there's a lot of, my son-in-law works for a big electrical firm, Fields over in Freiburg, so he's kinda doing a whole layout for me, they, I'm familiar a little bit with it, they're bringing in a four hundred amp, and then they break off and transformers, and so it's kind of extensive, but not terrible, you know?
Well, you need to, you need to be talking to the utility soon, because they're the ones who are gonna provide that transformer.
Yeah.
And if they could tell you, we just had an issue with another campground, and he ended up redesigning the whole electric system because they couldn't get one in a timely fashion.
Good, good advice.
I'd like to see a recommendation in our approval for moving the-
So, we're not approving anything with this one? It's just a conceptual? He, he just wanted to come and kinda get input from the board, uh, before he decided to move forward with anything?
I, I agree with him, if he can move that ten-foot way down.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was gonna say, talk to Public Works and, and, and they'll tell you the best place along that stretch that they think the road would be.
Sure. I've spoken with Nick as well, he's uh, he's willing to do some uh, changes on the plan as well. DeBois and King, so, I've already spoken with him.
Oh, okay, yeah, I mean, that, you know, you know all the, he knows all the players, he knows all the people he needs to talk to.
Yeah.
It mi- it might be worth also letting him know your thoughts on, he would require a sidewalk waiver to let, let him know what your thoughts are on that.
I would have no problem with that at all. It's too far down the road to get to the weirs to, to worry about sidewalks.
Oh, they walk it, oh, they walk it, they walk it from the broken spoke all the way down. There is plenty of people walking on that road in the summertime. I live right across the street from where it's proposing the campground, directly across the street. I have a picture of it.
It's, you, you get a, you get a, a, a big draw. High Octane and many other establishments, Fun Spot, Go Cat Track, there's, there's a big draw that, if you're, just, just talk it out loud, families go camping.
But I think we can only require them, Dave, to put the sidewalk in front of their, on their parcel, and that leaves almost a mile of-
I understand.
But it's a start.
It's a start.
Exactly.
It's a start. And I know when-
Oh, I agree with that.
Families go camping, they bring kids, you know, yeah, sure, you can go to Fun Spot. I understand there are only gonna be eight hundred and sixteen, or whatever the number was, of sidewalk.
I know what you're saying, you know.
But it's a start, because if the next vacant piece of property gets developed and we require a sidewalk for them, now we're a little bit close.
Get you to the end of the street, yeah.
Now we don't feel so bad, yeah.
It's, it's, it's a concern. I think what I like most is that you're open.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
And you're here to ask the questions, that's huge.
And I do this stuff for a living, so I, I enjoy it. My son-in-law's got a lot of new machines, so he'll be putting some sidewalks in. I mean, it seems like a lot, but it really isn't, you know? It's not a, it's not a, uh, it's not a deal breaker for me. I mean, designing a really nice entrance that curves both ways, so you can get big units in, a sign perhaps in the middle of it, and then sidewalk up each side, you know, I mean, like you say, it's a start.
And if you didn't have the draw, maybe it would be different, but let's face it, there's a lot of people that are gonna wanna go from that campground to that end of roller coaster road.
One hundred percent, I agree. That's why I'm proposing it here. There's a lot to do up here, it's nice, you know?
Any more questions, discussion? Thank you, thank you very much.
Alright, thank you, thank you for your thoughts.
Do you want these back?
Uh, you guys can hang on to those if you'd like.
Well, we will, that's the thing.
Yeah, they're a little bit bigger, they're easier to see.
For the old guys.
Anybody else that wants to have a copy of it?
You might consider listening to your wife more.
Yeah, well, I gave that up a long time ago. Sorry. She's the boss. So, uh, I guess my next, uh, my, my only other question would be, is um, fill out the application and we go to the next step. I mean, it seems like you get some pretty good input tonight, so.
So, uh, before you can come to the, uh, the planning board with an actual formal application, you're gonna need to go to the zoning board first.
Okay. Yep, so get on their agenda.
What does he need from the zoning board?
He's gonna need a variance and a special exception.
For the use?
For the use.
For the use, okay. I, I didn't, how is that zoned out there?
Uh, it's rural residential, so he needs the special exception for the campground. And because our, uh, rural residential doesn't allow multiple uses on a lot, he's got the residential and a campground, so he has to have the variance for that as well.
Oh, alright, okay, okay.
So zoning would be the next one.
Yep, so zoning will be your first step, cause then, this can be the ARNA, and then after that, then, when you have your, your formal plan is drawn up and everything else done, then you can come back to planning board.
Perfect. Thank you, guys.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Next up is PB two zero two six dash zero one eight Pickle Pond Road. Conceptual review of a twenty-six acre, or twenty-six unit cluster subdivision. Uh, is the applicant present, ready to present?
Can I just, for a matter of, of the record?
Yep.
I just wanted to be known that I checked with, having been a resident on the road, I checked with, planning downstairs earlier in the week. Because I, I know that there's a lot of people on the road that are concerned, have issues with this development, and want questions answered. Unfortunately, because I sit on the planning board, I seem to be the go-to for the twenty-two residents on the road. And, and I checked earlier in the week, or excuse me, last week, Friday I believe, Thursday or Friday, and specifically asked if there was anything relative to Pickle Pond Road coming up at this meeting, and I was told no there was not. And I understand, Rob explained, this was a last minute, but I want it to be on the record that this was a last minute. It doesn't even show on the agenda that I picked up last week. And I'm sure that there's gonna be some people, when it went before zoning, there was nineteen people, Mike, you were here, there was nineteen people from the road that showed up. And I would think that those people would wanna at least be here for the conceptual, and I just want that to be on the record that this is a last minute.
So noted. Thank you. I guess, uh, state your name and where you're from.
Uh, good evening, everyone, my name is Nick Loring, I'm with Benchmark Engineering. Uh, we're the, um, the engineers for the applicant Parade RAI LLC. They're the owner and applicant of the parcel, the subject parcel on Pickle Pond Road. It's tax map thirteen, lot one eighty-three dash sixteen. The parcel is a hundred and fifty acre undeveloped parcel in the rural residential, it's RR one zone. Uh, our appro, our proposal is for, um, to develop this as a cluster under the cluster development regulations. The proposal is for twenty-six single-family homes between three and four bedrooms. The, the homes will be serviced by Septic Systems and Wells. We're proposing two public roads to service, um, for access to the twenty-six homes, they each end in a cul-de-sac. We were before the zoning board in September, they did grant a variance to allow the additional, the, the longer road. At the bottom there does exceed the thousands, um, linear feet max road length, it's thirteen hundred feet. So we obtained a variance for that additional length of road. If you, looking at this plan here, this is the front portion of the property, so it's a hundred and fifty acres, this is the front. If you kinda look at the very back there and block this front off, that's about the front twenty-eight acres. So the rear a hundred and twenty-plus acres is being left in open space. We do have, so if you look at the twenty-six acres, um, twenty-six homes at a hundred and fifty acres, there's roughly about a little over five acres per home. That's including the, um, the buildable areas that we show here, and then the common land in the back. So that back hundred and twenty will, will be open space. We do, at the end of the larger, longer cul-de-sac, we are putting a trail easement for access for the residents to the rear of the property. And total disturbance for the site, we're, the area in dark green is what we're showing for our building sites for the twenty-six house locations. Um, that area, including the road, is just over ten acres, so we're under ten percent, for our total disturbance on the site. We have, um, for safety, we have two, um, proposed cisterns that we're showing on that plan. One's about halfway up, and there's another in between the two cul-de-sacs on Pickle Pond Road. So, um, at this point, we're here conceptually, our next step is, is a technical review committee, so these kinda locations are subject to fire department's review and approval at, at, through the TRC process. Couple waivers we've identified, and we wanted to discuss with the board tonight. The first one is sidewalks, so I kinda look at this in two separate parts. So the first, we'd like to request a waiver for constructing sidewalks along Pickle Pond Road. Uh, there's no sidewalks currently on Pickle, and on, um, the roads on either end, Parade and Meredith Center Road, there's no sidewalks to connect to out onto those streets. So we're asking for, um, a waiver for that. There's also the item of maintenance for snow clearing on the sidewalks, the, from what I could tell, the closest sidewalk Laconia has is, would be Elm Street from there, which is, which is quite a ways. So that, that's the request we're gonna have for a waiver along the frontage. And we did speak with DPW, the internal roads, we are, so we're proposing something, it's a different, but I think we've done this in, in previous ones, and I think you'll recognize it, is we're, on the bottom of this plan here, you can see, I just drew a quick cross-section for everyone of what the street will be. So it's two twelve-foot travel lanes, so that's your twenty-four foot standard road. And what we're proposing is, on the left-hand side, is to have a, a striped fog line with an additional four foot for pedestrian access. And what this does is, one, it allows a sidewalk component and ability for people to walk down that street and get to the trails at the back, but it also allows the public works to maintain it in the winter with the regular conventional, just plow truck. They don't need, um, anything for, for the separate sidewalks, so that can be plowed and maintained. And again, any comments, they, they have, conceptually, we discussed it briefly with them, and they, they were okay with the proposal as long as we kept the road center line, um, in between the two twelve-foot travel lanes, so the crown is in the middle of the road. This would have one side, a four-foot extension. So that's, uh, kinda that second part we're looking for. And I guess either Rob or the board, if that's, I'd put the request in for that as a waiver, because it's not a traditional sidewalk. So if, if, it'll be there, if the board feels it's not applicable for that portion, we can, um, certainly discuss that or go over it at the final planning meeting. And the second waiver would be for, um, a reduction in the perimeter buffer from seventy-five feet down to forty. So this is allowed in the, um, the land use, the zoning regulations. This is a, um, different land use that falls into the zoning category. But we're looking to have the buffer along the front Pickle Pond, and then along units twenty-five and twenty-six, a reduction to forty feet. So I'll just point them out briefly, so it's, it's this stretch here, and then this stretch here. The rest of the site, um, will maintain the seventy-five foot buffer. We also have two conditional use permits. There's one to allow disturbance in the wetland buffers. These, all the wetland buffers shown here, in that lighter green, have the fifty-foot wetland buffer, um, to the onsite wetlands. And we're, there's a few spots where all the water, low spots, that we're gonna have to have drainage pipes and some of the drainage measures, which are an allowed use in that buffer, um, subject to a conditional use permit by the board. And the other conditional use permit would, would be for the allowed use of the cluster development, um, in this zone. And that's all I have, I can answer any questions that the board has.
Go ahead.
Um, so you have a hundred and fifty acres?
Yep.
These are all going to be privately owned?
The units?
Parcels that you're going, that you're proposing, the twenty-six?
They're, they're development pads, so they'd be, it does be a condo association.
It will be condos?
Yep, yep.
So it's a, it's a cluster subdivision, so they're kinda like a building envelope that you have so much, so much space on?
Yep. Yeah, so these are the building sites, and then the houses would, so you'd have your limited common area around it, um.
Why, why wouldn't you spread out a little bit?
Well, the, we're trying to avoid wetland impacts is really the main, if we, we're keeping our, you know, the goal of cluster development in this, with the footprints that we're looking at building, in the land area, we do, we have the room for these units and not expanding into the back. Um, and you can see, there is a wetland that starts right here, so with, with this proposal, there's no wetland impacts. If we start pushing further into the site, you're, one, it kinda, it's your start, having wetland impacts, you're pushing, if I flip this around, you can see kinda the thought behind.
The, the whole kinda premise behind-
The total parcel. So this is an old aerial overlay, and you'll see that plan you were looking at was really just this one chunk right here. So that's what I was saying, the front twenty-eight acres. So we're trying to keep that, that front area, all the development concentrated in there. And it, you know, that kind of intent of the open space development is to put your development and then leave as much undisturbed land in the back as you can.
Am I allowed?
I, I think, so, since you're a direct abutter, you should act, actually recuse yourself-
Okay.
-from the planning board at this time.
So I can't express my, I would have to resign from the planning board in order to express my feelings?
So, so when there's, when there's a public hearing, then you would, then you would be able to go after you've recused yourself from the board?
As I can. I'm sorry, there was enough noise there, I couldn't make a word.
Yeah, yeah, understandable. No, so when they have the public hearing, and you recuse yourself of the board, then you, you're acting as a private citizen, and you can discuss, and you can bring up your concerns.
Alright, cause I do have, I mean, I, I understand that the gentleman bought the property to develop, and I understand that this is the best he can do for the, because of the wetlands on the property. And I'm not trying to stand in the way of that, I just have some concerns that, very much like I had with the gentleman with the campground, that being familiar with roller coaster road, being familiar with that piece of property on roller coaster road, I have some concerns. And I think as a citizen and a member of the planning board, to express those is important, um, but I, I get it, I will recuse myself. I, I'm not trying to stand in the way of this, Peter. I, I just, I just want, I have some id, some ideas that might make it livable for everybody.
If, if you're happy with his input,
I am, absolutely.
I just don't wanna get drawn into a legal situation where-
And, and that, that's, I appreciate that. Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I, you know, there are some people on the road that, that do not want this, and that's not realistic, I understand that. Um, and truth be known, I think, yes, it's a hundred and fifty-one acres, but this is where you can really develop because of the wetlands and the grade changes. Am I accurate in saying that? I mean, it's, the rest of the property is pretty tough to put anything on without infringing on wetlands.
Yeah, the, so the wetlands, what happened was, this property, there's definite defined wetlands. We had our wetland scientist out there in April, May, and June, so she was out, it was the wet time of the year. She was out there, and she's been a wetland scientist for forty-plus years, she's great. And even the logging on the property really wreaked havoc with it.
I agree with that.
What you have is, you had, the, this property pitches, so this is the high side, and it all drains to this large wetland here. So the, the slope goes down. And what you had was, the logging trails that go through there run per, perpendicular to all of those streams that are coming down.
All those wheel ruts created.
Wheel ruts created, and that's, and then you get water that's spilling out everywhere. There are, we did find, there are areas that are uplands, but it's a significant wetland crossing, like I said earlier, to get to them. So ultimately, you get roughly the same amount of lots, and I looked at this and we said, why put all this infrastructure in, disturb all this area, you kind of read through cluster development, and this is all, you know, I've been doing this for twenty years now, and I like cluster developments, I mean, I'm from the area, I've seen a lot of stuff built up. I, I think it's a good thing, because you're leaving large tracts of land like this that are gonna be controlled by the association, not to be developed. And you're, you're kind of taking that hundred acres, that's abutting, you know, some larger developed pieces to the west, you have to the south, you have the state land. So you're kinda keeping, this isn't on an island, right? There's other larger properties around it that aren't gonna be developed, so you're adding to that larger area with, with keeping that land in the back as a undeveloped chunk.
I guess, what would be best is if I met with you and you off, outside of this, in, in, cause I think that it's gonna happen. I know that's gonna happen, but if we can make it agreeable to more people on the road, it's a win-win for everybody. And it, so if you would be open to that, that's, I, I, I'm gonna recuse myself from here on out, with the idea that we can possibly sit down and, maybe we can't come to any changes, but it's, I think that, at that point, I'm just, I'm gonna, I'm gonna step away.
So will this be a C road, once again?
No.
This'll be a private road? This'll be a private road?
So, that, that is dependent upon if they were, if they're proposed to keep the right-of-way with what it is, to meet a city standard and the road is built to city spec, then it could be a city road. But if they, if they're requesting waivers and reductions, it most likely will not be. And I think they're probably still in their research phase. I don't know, have you guys figured out whether you wanna do?
Yeah, so the, the intent right now is to do public roads. We have, um, the grades out there are on the roads, they meet all the road standards. We have a fifty-foot right-of-way, so everything we have meets the city's town road standards.
So just like that, then they could do, once they, I think it's eighty percent of the houses on there were approved and had COs, then they could go to, there's a, a street acceptance process where they'd come back to planning board and say, hey, the street was built to this specification, we've had the binder down for this long, we've had this down for this long and people use, oh, yep, it's been built to our specs and we're happy with it. Planning board provides a recommendation then, and then it goes before city council. And city council makes the ultimate say of whether they want to accept the road or not.
I'm just wondering about, you know, the sidewalk design. Because definitely, a developer like this, people are gonna wanna walk a little bit. And, and just my thought is, I think you need to link both cul-de-sacs with a sidewalk. So, 'cause people are gonna wanna walk. I live in a neighborhood like this and we don't have any sidewalks and it would certainly be nice to be off the street to walk around the cul-de-sac like that. So, just a thought. And I didn't know what public works thought of just having a delineator with a fog line.
I, I think this is, um, Nick, you spoke to DPW about the fog line. What were, what?
So I spoke with, uh, my name's Pete Cranny, by the way. Um, I spoke with Wes and he said that he would prefer that because he wouldn't have to bring any apparatus out there to plow it. Yep, he actually preferred it. He says he recommended it a few times to the board, but, um, it goes on.
And, and I think this is a, a good way for the, you know, for DPW and the planning board to come to, what's our consensus on this? What do we wanna do? And if, but sadly, if they're happy with it and DPW's happy with it and we're providing some access?
If we can put sidewalks in, especially in a, further out from the city, in a situation like this, and it makes it easier 'cause all of them, by me, Wes doesn't plow 'cause he can't get to it, so.
And, and I think that, this solves that and I, I think that's kind of the goal of the cluster is to have that kind of closer knit, uh, community, uh, and that's kind of what they're kind of relaying.
Some walkability, yeah. But I would like to see, you know, just that connector between the two cul-de-sacs so that they could, if somebody wanted to walk up around that loop too. Just a thought.
Okay, yeah, sure.
Go ahead, counselor.
Pete?
Yep.
Are you willing to deed the balance of the land to, to conservation?
There's provisions in, so there's three types of open space. There's the active, there's limited, and then there's, there's open space conservation, which really falls into, it, it'd be still managed as part of this and I guess that's more of a legal question if it can be. I mean, certainly a portion of it could be, but I, I think from, with the zoning requirements, there may be some sections that we have to keep as part of this property's open space.
There is, there is a land requirement that they have to.
Yeah.
But I, I think that you can write it in a way, you can, there, there's a solution to make it conservation, open space or to come to an agreement where...
Actually, that would affect them tax-wise too.
Yeah, and with the, what we're looking to do back there, it's trail systems which are in, I believe are allowed in. It's the heavier, if you read through the conservation or the cluster subdivision rules, you can put more common recreational like parks, things like that in, if you start breaking it into, you can do a quarter of the, um, quarter and a quarter and then half, I think, is what the breakdown is for your open space on what the, the limited versus, um, the full open space versus conservation open space.
We can definitely speak with legal though.
Yeah, and come up with some plan for that.
Yep.
We'd also need to figure out how the conservation would get to it because technically these will be private property and how to get to that.
But I think, Amy, if, if I may, is, I think what they're talking about is, and I, I may be way off, but if they have to denote X number of acres to meet this cluster development, that leaves a whole bunch of land that has road access from Pickrel Pond Road that could be deeded, however it was deeded, that would be accessible without going through this cluster development, if, if I understand it correctly. Maybe I'm, I'm off in my understanding.
And there, there is that, there's a trail access off the longer cul-de-sac into the back there. So if this becomes a public road and that, that's a common area, an access point that we, I guess the intent would be to build it. Everyone knows about it up front, you put the trail in there, so when everyone's buying their homes, it's, doesn't come up later on. So everyone's aware that there's access to the rear of that property at that point.
But they could also access it from Pickrel Pond Road, um, further to the east if they wanted to, through the, just the land.
Yeah, yeah, 'cause we'll have some area on where that, where it kind of widens out in the front there and then down, down the side. So, and the, the thinking with access off, we've done a lot of these when we, we loop a trail around the back of the units and when it's in the control, when the homeowners association finally takes over, they do not like it because now they have a trail right in everyone's backyards and that's one of the things, multiple times, we've gone back and removed that. So my thinking here was you just provide a straight shot to the real backland that's usable, that hundred and twenty-plus acres. So it kind of...
That, that trail system that you talked, talked of off, off the line?
Off the back, yeah, the logic.
Is that the one that connects onto the state property up off Parade Road?
Yeah, yeah, there are some, the, the trails in this one are, are pretty grown up. But yeah, that connects into those, the state land.
I know the property well, Peter.
Yeah, oh yeah, I'm sure you do.
I've been out there for forty-plus years, I've lived there for forty-plus years and roamed through there, all that property. And they did, and when they logged it, they hit it hard and caused a lot of damage.
Yep.
It is what it is.
Yep, too bad, yep.
For me, if the developer is willing to, to talk to the, to the neighborhood and, and everybody can come to a consensus and everybody's, I mean, nobody's gonna be, everybody's not gonna be super happy and...
Sure.
We can't, we, we can't stop progress. But if, if you are willing to work with the neighbors, I think you're just gonna...
It will help.
It'll, it'll go a long way.
We, we've also talked with DPW as well and we've committed up to like three hundred thousand to do some paving and improvements on that Pickrel Pond Road as well, so. Wes said that he'd like to move forward with some borings to see what's actually under the road so they can get a, a good idea of what it would cost to replace it and repave it. So I mean, we're willing to, you know, front that money and, and hopefully, um, I mean, the project's only gonna be better if we have that road paved, so.
Sure.
I, I did have one question if I... So you said, uh, you were looking for a variance for a reduction in the buffer. Is that, did I understand that?
It's a waiver request.
Okay, a waiver. And I see that you're proposing a forty-foot perimeter buffer running down Pickrel Pond Road. Is that correct? And normally it would be on a cluster development, it would be seventy?
Seventy-five.
Seventy-five, okay. And is, and that seventy-five would also be on, well, I'll say like it is, between your property and my property?
Yes.
Would typically be seventy-five?
Yep. Yeah, and that's, it, that request is coming, it's specifically written in the requi, in the regulations that, that seventy-five foot can be reduced to forty with a waiver from the planning board.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Yep, sure.
I'm trying to write as you're speaking and I wanna be able to read what I wrote, so.
Yep.
Thank you.
Anything else? I guess, thank you.
Alright, alright.
Thank you.
Yep, have a great night.
You too.
There goes the thought that everybody is here for the impact fee study.
That's too boring for people to come to.
I think it's awesome. I can't wait.
My question, Gary, do you all want that road paved?
If you're asking me, no.
You can go faster.
No. The, it wasn't that long ago that the city adopted it as a public way because it was an emergency lane. It was one of those roads that were identified that they couldn't find a paper trail on it. So for eight years, we dealt with an emergency lane and there was very little, the only thing that happened is they plowed it. Very little maintenance. As a result, it got revisited, city took it over, through a council vote that it was gonna be, city was gonna take the road back. Last July, they came through with a reclaimer and they chewed up all the pavement, turned it back into a dirt road. They did tie one section of it. So we have, if you go from Arida Center Road headed easterly, you go pavement, dirt, pavement, dirt, pavement. That's how the road is now. Wes Anderson said it would take a million dollars to fix that road to city standards to go from Parade Road to Arida Center Road. So, you know, it, it's, I'm sure that there's, there's some people like, that have nice vehicles and when they drive down that road, this time of year when we haven't had rain, it's, it doesn't, you know, you can't wash your car enough.
Right.
Would, would I like to see the road paved if it was done properly? That's the problem. The forty-one years that I've lived out there, the city's never done it properly. And as, as he said, was they need to do some borings and find out what's under there. That was, forty, forty-five years ago, that was a single-lane gravel road that you wanted to stay on the crown in the months of March and April because it was, it was a mud road.
Right.
I noticed that recently, there's a, um, traffic indicator, the, the accountant and I would assume it's the developer that's counting the traffic on the road, um, that just showed up last week. I've been driving over as much as I can. That's a joke. That is a joke. So I, I, I don't know the answer. I mean, this is, this is, um, changing the dynamics drastically of the neighborhood, but it's development and I, and I understand it's gonna happen. But I, I also, there are gonna be some people that are hot because they weren't here tonight. I, I'm just, I'm just saying.
Well, you had a good showing at the zoning board and, you know, at least half the residents showed up for that meeting.
There's twenty-two residents on that road, houses, there was nineteen people.
That's a good showing. That's a tremendous showing, actually. So my question is, what do people want? Do they wanna pave it?
That's something that's gonna have to be addressed here in a public meeting. I can't say that. I won't speak.
So, you know, I would probably hesitate how much you are talking about a project that you have not got and conditions that you're already speculating to put on a project without seeing a project and coming to a conclusion without seeing the formal project.
I agree. I think that, I think that that's for the public to address their concerns, whether it's, what, what their concerns might be.
Mixogen item.
Alright, we ready?
Moving right along.
Zoning amendment, rewrite of the impact fee ordinance and adoption of the justification study, staff presentation.
So, um, kinda as we brought, uh, last month, um, in our first presentation of it, uh, we were asked to come back with some data. So you'll see, um, DTA provided us, um, they looked at several other communities, uh, besides us when they were doing our impact fee study. That's the sheet here. And that just shows, uh, it's eight different communities and how eight different communities have impact fees. And you'll see that not every community assesses impact fees for everything. Some of them, such as Bedford, for example, they're only assessing an impact fee for schools and for parks and rec. Uh, while Fremont is only doing it for schools, Brentwood is doing it for everything except for roads and Manchester does it for school and fire. Historically, the city of Laconia has done it for everything. The only added ones that we're looking to add in there are municipal offices and we're also looking to add in public works, works facilities that state law just changed to allow us to collect an impact fee for that.
I don't seem to have that in my...
Carry on, you can have my...
It's your last page.
I do.
It's on the backside, your last page of the...
Okay.
Maybe not.
You have mine.
Alright, thank you Phil, I don't have that. You're right.
Here, you, you can just have mine. No, this is, this is only what we've done. 'Cause it was in, it was under public hearings earlier in the meeting and we just, and we moved it.
Yep.
But...
There it is, yep. My apologies.
I'll give you that one back. Thank you, Rob.
True to merits.
Oh, you have it. I lied.
So, um, after my last planning board meeting, uh, I was asked if we could start, if we could look at other communities, um, as well. So we started going down a rabbit hole and I'll tell you, there is no standard for how impact fees are done anywhere in the state. Every community is absolutely one hundred percent different than the next. Each, each municipality that does collect impact fees, they have a study that was done at a different time. They have different capital improvement projects, they have different budgeting processes such, some of them are not tax cap compliant, they don't have a tax cap. And that affects them in other ways. So, um, it's, it's impossible to, there's no comparing apples to apples with impact fees in other communities. All you, all we can really provide you is, these other eight communities, we could go and do every two hundred in other community in the, in the, in the state, but it's just gonna give us the same answer as, everybody is completely different. With that, uh, there was also some feedback at the last meeting that tw- we proposed a twenty-five, to start at the current impact fee of the new assessment of twenty-five percent, that we should look at also what fifty percent would be. So in this table, you'll have in there, at the top is what our current impact fees are for each of the different residential types. And at twenty-five percent is the next one down and that shows the, the price difference of what it would cost a developer per residential unit, um, at the twenty-five percent. And then there's a fifty percent at the bottom, that if we adopted fifty percent of the new proposed impact fees, what that would bring us to. And, and the whole purpose of impact fees is to offset the cost to the taxpayer for the development. So as these developments come in, as you're increasing services, you're putting that increased service cost back on the developer.
Can you just clarify on the single-family attached, single-family detached, what, what would be the difference between the single-family?
So, one would be a normal, single-family home that stands by itself and the other one would be a townhome.
Okay, thank you.
A townhome is considered a single-family?
Yep.
Oh, I did not know that. Thank you. Good question, Dave.
Two single families.
Two single families, right, but they'd be, they'd fall under that attached.
I would've assumed that would be a two-unit structure.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, one would, one would...
No, so...
Like a duplex condo?
So...
Sorry, Rob.
So it comes down to the common space in it. If you have a shared common space and an attic and basement, then it's a two-unit. If you do not and it's separated by firewall, it's a townhome. So if you don't have the shared, if, if the firewall going all the way straight through the building and you have separate attic all the way to the basement, then it would be just a townhome. If it does not have that, then it's a two-unit.
Interesting.
Clear as mud?
Absolutely.
Absolutely, yep.
Absolutely. Actually, I did get it. Surprisingly enough.
So, um...
Why is a two-unit structure so expensive? Is that for both units?
So that is for, that is for both units. So that's, so our current, our current impact fee is forty-six thirty-nine per unit in a two-unit. So you're, they're paying, you know, ninety. And so this has to do with corresponding studies that have been done saying the, the type of, the type of residents that are, some units are inherently, provide more services and they have more, more apt to have children than other types. So that's where this whole factor of, this is more expensive to have a single family or it's more expensive to have a, a multifamily is, is the cost of services that are usually attributed to those.
Why is it a lesser amount if it's going up twenty-five percent?
So, a, a, and that's because, um, our current one, the climate has changed and things have changed.
Twenty-five percent more than this number was. No, no, no.
Yeah, so, so for two-unit structure and multifamily, they did go down at the twenty-five percent. And that's because of the analysis that was done, that it came back and said, the proportional rate of services for those two units was, needed to be changed and that was offset again. 'Cause you see, there's a, a larger deviation in our current fees to what the new one is between those.
And that was to encourage?
No, that, that just has to do with data.
Okay.
Just how the math worked out.
And the multifamily structures is per unit?
Yep.
Okay, so like a, a sixty apartment?
Right, so if I had a ninety-unit apartment building?
It's thirty-three hundred bucks per unit.
Yep.
Okay, got it.
And that just goes, and like I said, it, that's just how the math worked out of, when... And that just goes, and like I said, it, that's just how the math worked out of, when they did this original study back in two thousand nine, their data said this is, it costs more by this much and they looked at all these other variables. When they did the new study, they said, hey, it came back and the numbers changed. So, it's just, that's where the data went.
I guess it pays to build an industrial space.
Well, you know what, uh, so the commercial, industrial and, um, office space, those all really increased.
That's per square foot, those figures?
Yeah. Yeah, i- it's quite a bit more. But the, the reality was, looking back at impact fees, so we did our last study back in two thousand nine and in two thousand nine, we only collected twenty-five percent of that impact fee. And then it wasn't until, um.
Eleven, not sixteen?
Hmm, twenty-twenty-one. We decided we were going to increase that and collect fifty percent of, of that two thousand nine study. So, and that did not factor in inflation or, or any of those numbers. So, in our new study, inflation is built into it. So, um, if you start at the twenty-five percent or the fifty percent, um, it goes, it would go up every year according to CPI. And it would also go up each year five percent until we get to the maximum hundred percent of what we could assess. So, we're not locked into a two thousand nine rate, only collecting that two thousand nine rate for fifteen years and then never moving forward. This incrementally moves it up every year, um, and continues to move it up with the cost of inflation until there's a new study adopted.
And things will be different again, so.
And then things will completely change yet again. But this also does, uh, give us the ability to collect impact fees for public work facilities and for municipal facilities, which we have not done, um, which is very important, especially now as we're looking at a larger development coming into the north and what kind of shock is that gonna be to our services that we need to provide as a city?
So.
Rob, just for clarification, how would, um, hypothetically, a campground, would they pay impact fees?
They di- they do, they would fall under, um, I, I believe it was. I believe it was the office institutional, there's a, I, on the, in those, in the actual study, it breaks down the individual uses in there.
There is, there is an impact fee that's assessed to it.
Yeah.
Because let's face it, there's gonna be fire, police.
Yep.
There's, there's gonna be an impact.
Yeah, I can't remember the exact one it falls under. It, it's broken down in the, in the study with the, all the details for it. But even for the Char D campground, we did assess impact fees for that one as well, so.
I'm gonna throw my two cents out.
Okay.
I think we should go for fifty percent right now.
I'll second.
Could you look at that amount of money, ninety-six fifty-three on a single family detached? What's the cheapest single family house we're seeing built in Laconia?
Say five hundred.
Yeah, and it's, that's what, two, three percent?
So, uh, when we did the math on it and we did the average sales cost of what's going on at, right now, which was about six to six fifty, even at a hundred percent, it was only one point five percent of the cost of the house.
Say that again, at, at a hundred percent?
At a hundred percent, so it would've been just about twenty thousand dollars. At the hundred percent rate, it was only one point five percent the cost of the house.
I don't think that we're not gonna have contractors coming in and developing because we're going up on our impact fees. I, I do think that that, that number is just gonna be absorbed in the sale, the sale of the house.
To the buyer.
So, you know.
So much for four borough housing.
And that, and that's the double-edged sword.
But how do you, when a guy can build, if he's got a lot, what's the incentive for him to build a house for two fifty when he can build one for six fifty and have it get sold like that?
Yeah.
That's the issue.
So, we do have a section in here, uh, which is, uh.
More carrots.
Uh, twenty-two point two B, it was for workforce housing. That would be the only thing that would be exempt. Impact fees would be workforce housing units.
The, the entire.
The whole project or just per unit?
Just for, uh, twenty percent of the workforce housing unit. So, if you.
Like we did on New Salem Street?
Right, so if you had a, if you had a project and it was, and a hundred units and twenty percent of those were proposed to be workforce housing units, those twenty units would have zero impact fees. Okay. And that would be the only, the only deviation to, um, to impact fees.
What about nonprofit or something?
Uh, there, there is, so government agencies, cause we'd be exempt anyways, political subdivisions also exempt and nonprofit corporations that are domestic to New Hampshire would also be exempt.
And that's across the board, that we can't take into consideration of a, a portion would be exempt or they're just, the impact fees in its, in its entirety would be.
They would just be exempt.
Okay.
And we just thought, and we thought it would've been better to have a set standard of what it was as opposed to what it is now of, oh, you can approve up to eighty percent. And it was a mystery of how you got to the eighty percent, who qualifies and it was just cleaner.
So, any nonprofit who.
Any nonprofit that is.
From New Hampshire.
From New Hampshire.
Doesn't pay anything. So, we're talking Laconia Housing.
Laconia Housing is a political subdivision of us anyways. They're a, they're a, a government agency.
Community developers.
Community, community developers would be, uh, they would be one.
They would be completely exempt.
Which is problematic based on.
For, no, 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 no. For, for their building, if they were doing a residential development, only twenty percent of the units would be.
Okay, so a building that they're going to have their offices.
So, when you're talking, when you're talking about a nonprofit, we're talking about, I am the American Red Cross and I'm a national nonprofit and I come in and I'm gonna build the headquarters in Laconia, New Hampshire. You're paying impact fees. If you are a.
New Hampshire Red Cross.
New Hampshire Red Cross and you're building a headquarters in Laconia, you are exempt.
Okay, but because it's a headquarters, not housing.
Not housing.
Okay.
Just what that is. So, if you are league searching community developers and you, you're a nonprofit, but you're submitting an application for a hundred units and twenty of those are workforce housing, you're paying impact fees on the eighty of those. The twenty percent that are workforce housing, you're not paying impact fees on.
For an example, let's use Bayside.
Yep.
Sixteen units.
Sixteen units there. So, only if those were, if, if one hundred percent of those were workforce housing units, only twenty percent of them would be exempt.
So, that twenty percent is a hinge point.
The, the twenty percent is the locked, is that, that's your maximum. You can do as many workforce housing units as you want to, but only.
Hundred percent get the juice.
Yeah. So, that, you know, when.
Small carrot, but a small carrot.
It's a small carrot, but it's something. So, if you came in, you were doing a hundred workforce housing units, only twenty percent of those are getting the, getting the benefit. The other, the other eighty, you're, you're paying full price.
But you're welcome for that carrot.
Yeah.
Yes. That's in our rates now?
No, that's in the new one.
Which we have to have a public hearing for.
Yeah.
And approve and then the council has to have a public hearing and approve.
Yeah. So, it, we had originally scheduled this so that we would have a public hearing tonight, schedule it for a second public hearing for.
November.
More public to come, um, for November and then after the November public hearing, we would.
Do you envision this being at the front end of a, of a hearing tonight?
We were hoping that they were all here.
I thought all these people were here for impact fees. No, I didn't. I didn't think nobody's interested in impact fees, except for the developer at the end of the day.
The campground.
Campground.
Campground, that's what it vacated. It's, that's what the crowd was.
They didn't talk much about it.
It was a conceptual.
It was just a conceptual.
No public comment.
Okay, okay.
Oh, if I may. Um, so I, I listened, it was riveting, by the way. I listened to last month's meeting on, on YouTube today, so I was, you guys are very entertaining. But I'm curious, counselor, what, if you have spoken with your other counselors to see maybe where they would be falling in the, in the number zone, if they would be willing to go with the fifty?
I have not discussed.
Okay. I just didn't know if, if they felt one way or the other, if, if we're shooting ourselves in the foot by jumping to this fifty and they're like, no, 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 it's gonna be too much. You know what I mean? I don't wanna have to, I don't wanna have to backpedal if there's a, if there's a thought going on right now.
I don't know what we can push the fifty through. What I am concerned about is the five percent and cost of living, a part of it. I mean, the five percent on top of fifty is significant.
That's not till next year.
But it's.
But it's coming.
It's still significant. If you then plug in cost of living.
Hey, disinflation.
So, so it started at the twenty-five.
I'm not opposed to the cost of living increase. I'm concerned about fifty percent plus five percent a year.
Till we hit a hundred.
But doesn't even say that?
No, it doesn't.
It does, it does say that. It does say that.
We have cap.
In ten years, we would hit a hundred.
There, there, there is a cap. You can only, you can only collect to the maximum of what the impact fee was, uh, study goes to, plus the inflation. So, you can't add five percent to it each year and that five.
Forever.
Forever, yeah. So, you reach it, you, you re- reach a maximum.
I, I don't see that, but okay, I'll take your word for it.
Do you have that number? I mean, I can do the math if that's fifty percent.
I guess, one thing I just wanna, when we talk about impact fees, we're talking about developers, we're talking about, there are, there are some people that are gonna build one house.
Right, right.
You know, that one person that his dream is to build that one house and live in it for as long as he can afford to live in it. And I just, I just want the board to think of that when we say, when we jump from the current to right to fifty. Is there something in between that we could do?
The board can waive, correct?
No, I don't believe it.
This would, this would re- remove the waiver. There would be no waivers for impact fees.
Ever?
No.
Ever, ever. Right, so that's, and that's just something to mull around, you know?
But I mean, in reality, right now, it's about two seventy-five a square foot to build a house. That's not counting septic foundation and land. That's just structure. So, thousand square foot house is two seventy-five, septic is what now, fifty? Foundation's probably thirty? So, you're already up fairly high in that number and this is really a drop in the bucket in that.
One and a half percent.
If you're a developer, yes. It's, it, because you're gonna turn around and flip that house and, and make money off that house. I'm just talking about, there are some, there's a few few in between, but there are some people out there that are building a house to live in, not to flip or not to do Airbnb. It's their, their dream to build a house and own a house. I just want, just wanna entertain.
You know, we shortchanged every department on how they're liking fees for how long? And I guess, do we either go for the big chunk and try, and give up that reward for the little guy? I don't know, that's.
Yeah, I mean, that's something that, it's, I don't know the, the right answer.
I mean, Rob, you see far more applications for, from developers than you do from a single resident building a house.
And they might ask for the waivers too.
The developers?
All the time.
Yeah. So, uh, we only granted waivers for infill rehab. So, most of these developments that are going on, they were not eligible for waivers.
That's different than before your time. I sat here while we waived.
Yes.
Impact fees by the truckload.
I, I can't speak to previous things.
Responsible for that, but that's why I asked or stated it could be, it could be waived cause I watched it being waived all the time.
This is, this is taking that all to.
Nine out of ten times, we weren't even told it was, boy, hey.
Oh, right, until after the fact, you don't know.
Yep. No. I wish I was.
I wish you were too. Could've used those impact fees.
Yeah, well, exactly. That benefits every department.
As, as, as somebody who actually benefits from it.
Fifty percent.
That's what I, yep.
My concern is the fifty percent, if we, if we choose the fifty percent, the council might not be on board with the fifty and we have to come back.
We have to mull it over.
Do, but do we, um, what, what's the, what's the process? If we say we want fifty percent and the council's come back and counters at twenty-five, um, just, just playing devil's advocate. You know, do, do, does it have to then come back to us or?
It does. So, if we send it to council and it's, and it's at fifty percent and they say that's too much and they put it down, down to twenty-five, or if they say they don't wanna do it at all, then, then it dies.
So, you tell someone some money.
I mean, the, the reality is, a- at a hundred percent, uh, the impact fee on two single family homes would pay for the impact fee study.
Well worth it.
And, and I think it's a difference of, um, so you could keep your current assessed impact fees at, if I did it at the most expensive rate for the state school project, I'm only at six point eight million dollars versus we're, you're well over twenty million dollars in impact fees, uh, for the state school project.
Drop in the bucket for those guys.
Yeah.
They'll buy a fire truck, won't they?
Yeah, they're white.
Laser for the geese.
Do not buy me that laser.
I just.
The one for the peachy cove, you mean?
I think, I, my opinion of fifty's a little, I, I understand where you're coming from, Rich. I think fifty's a little drastic. It's a, it's a big swallow. That's just my opinion. That's, that's.
I, I have a problem with the five percent a year. I don't mind the cost of living, but I mind the five percent a year if we go with fifty. If you go with twenty-five, then I say, you know, five percent a year for five years or something like that.
State school's coming. That they need to pay.
Well, you, you know, we got tons of stuff, you know. By me, Governor's Woods, uh, Governor's Crossing too, there's what, another sixteen, something like that?
And it is in, in section, section C, the annual increase shall continue until the fee schedule reaches the maximum fees as adjusted.
Who sets the maximum fees?
The impact fee study sets the maximum fees.
It's already done.
It's already done. It's already, it's already done for you as, as part of the impact fee study, uh, because that was, that's what we paid them to do was to come in and do the, do the complete study. And that is a, the maximum assessed fee that we can assess on a single family home is nineteen thousand, three hundred and seven dollars and thirty-three cents. For a single family, for a townhome, it's eleven thousand, four hundred and sixty-five dollars. For a two-unit structure, sixteen thousand, three thirty-two. For a multifamily, uh, three uni- uh, you know, for three or more units, so it's thirteen thousand, three hundred and twenty-seven dollars per unit. And then for your retail space, nine dollars and forty-two cents per square foot office, uh, six eighty-seven and industrial, two sixty-four. And, and the reality is, this impact fee assessment factors in all of our CIP over the last several years. That was all part of the, the study. So, that is looking at what the city has adopted in its capital outlay budget, what was requested by each department head and what each department had relayed to as their needs for their department and then it looks at, you know, what has been funded. So, if you look at this, uh, another, uh, in another way, how it's broken down percentage-wise, um, in the impact fee study, you'll actually see departments that are funded more, actually their impact fee reduce, their percentage base reduced. So, departments that have a higher volume of capital outlay projects that are approved, their impact fees percentage-wise went down.
I'm skyrocketing apparently.
Which is, uh, which is.
I'm going up.
Which is, Parks and Rec went up quite a bit and, uh, so did roads.
Well, they'd have to, they don't have any right now, right?
But, but roads because it's, uh, as, as Wes forecasted everything out, you know, the reality is your road maintenance cost has gone up dramatically and it's not keeping up with inflation or anything else. So, um, he, he's on a, on a negative decline of, for, for road maintenance and.
And he wasn't allowed to have impact fees before, right?
Well, he got impact fees, but for roads, for just roads, but this also takes into account sidewalks to do complete streets.
Okay.
Which means we don't have no more sidewalk waivers.
No more what?
Sidewalk waivers.
I would suggest to you, don't worry about this, make this bigger when we go before the council.
Have a PowerPoint slide that could be huge.
Be- because when you look at this, you know, I've got a chart at home of the thirteen cities in the state of New Hampshire. Laconia is the second lowest tax rate of the thirteen cities. And when I let's move to Bellknap County, there's, no, it's ten cities. Thirteen cities, thirteen cities, there's ten towns in Bellknap County. We're sixty-eight cents higher than the average in Bellknap County. They have a courthouse, we have a jail, we have a county house of correction, a county home. We have litigating, uh, mental health and a dozen others. I've got somewhere the pages of tax-exempt properties here in New Hampshire. and a dozen others. I've got somewhere the pages of tax exempt properties here in New Hampshire, in Laconia. It's like five pages long.
And, and you know, um, that, that's very accurate. So, we, I went to, uh, uh, down to the Tuscan Village and did a seminar, a, a planning event with, uh, the town planner down there, and, uh, New Hampshire Planners Association, and they had the owner of Tuscan Village there, and the owner of the, um, the Rockingham Mall across the way. And, I don't know if you've been down to Tuscan Village, um, but that is a similar size to the state school project that we'll have here, and all of the road infrastructure that was done and the road upgrades that were done were paid for by the developer and all of the impact fees that were collected, and.
You need to be prepared to say that. I think we can pass this, but, sorry.
No, I love this.
I, you know, and I intend to say some of the things I just said here, if you bring this before the council. Uh, let's be real, folks, you know, we're giving the shop away, figuratively speaking.
And, and the reality is, uh, so, if we look at all the development that we've had in, in the city over the last twenty years, that's not, not paid impact fees what they should've been paying, and we look at, so we just got back the, the traffic study for the state school. Half of our roads are Fs. Half of, uh, our, our, our infrastructure is, is just not good. Putting these fees back on the developers that have no issues coming in here is only gonna benefit us in bringing some of those roads back up to where they should be.
Uh, listen, you don't have to sell me, you have to help me.
I will absolutely.
I'll pound the table, you know me, you know.
I know, yep.
I don't have any problem.
Yep.
What are you laughing at?
I, I'm loving this. This is, this is the best day ever.
But, I mean.
Look at this asshole over here.
But, I mean, you, you couple, you couple, the impact fee study and a master plan and every, and the state school project and everything that's going on, all of this all ties itself into each other, and is all inter, interrelated, and it's so imperative, and we're almost in such a fortuitous position right now to be making all of these changes of, and it's, it's dramatically gonna change the city.
One hundred percent. And if I could put a little personal spin on it, uh, my department, it's, it, on its own, uh, for CIP was, was given the, um, the roof needed to be done for the weirdest fire station and the community center. That's what I got for CIP money, because it was absolutely urgent. I needed a lot of other things, and it was approved using my own impact fees to buy my commercial turf care equipment. But I'm using my impact fees to do that via the budget, so it's, it's, the city can't afford to, 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 you know, do these things for us, and this is, this is the only way we can move forward. This is gonna pay for capital.
We, we have a, uh, we have a city ordinance that requires a two percent cap. And I don't, I've never seen the council have a, a, a desire to go over the two percent cap. So, you have a million dollar ladder truck, and you have a fifty thousand dollar four-wheel drive thing for the police department, and stuff, and, and traffic lights that are in desperate need of, of being synced up and whatever. So, I can sell this, I just, you know, I need you to do this for me. What we have to be careful of is not to go overboard, not too much minutia.
Am I making any sense?
No, and that, and I think that's why we originally sought the twenty-five percent, so it'd be, you wouldn't reach your maximum impact fee until twenty forty, which was the end of the, the impact fee study period. So, almost, like, you're gonna get to that twenty forty period and you're at a hundred percent, and then you can start, then you get your next impact fee study done.
What I would like you to do is propose both, or put both on the table. Let me fight for the fifty percent, which I'm more than willing to do. And I think I can get it if we have the discussion about where we sit here, and the two things I just gave you about Belknap County and the cities in the state. You know, we're getting hammered here, you know, philosophically speaking.
Yeah, cause, uh, I mean, I think it was, it was Bedford, their education one is half of what our ma- of what our maximum was, and it was just for the education.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I don't think what we're, I don't think our impact fee study is anything outrageous. I think it is very realistic to the current climate.
Yep. Well, like I said, I, my preference, you can, you can do as the, as the committee says, but my preference is that you propose both.
And, and that's why we did propose, uh, we had both ordinances of, of the twenty-five and the fifty, um, so, if, if we move those, so, I wanna do, schedule another public hearing for next month, so, should the newspaper be watching and they do a little article on it, there's an, another opportunity for people to come in and voice their input, ask their questions, and then after that point, we can send it to city council and.
Okay.
And get them, uh, get the final say.
Good comparison, so.
We wanna be transparent.
On this chart, it, Londonderry is over here.
Yeah.
And that's the last project that the Pillsbury group did.
Is.
Is Londonderry.
Yep.
So, they paid all those impact fees, which are over ours.
Yep.
Without a blink of an eye.
Yep.
So.
They're putting an exit on the highway.
And they put in the whole exit off the highway.
They paid for an exit off, now you think the federal standards. Oh, it was, yeah, it was horrible, I can, yeah. I, I don't know what it was, but it was.
So, is that what you'd like us to, is that what you'd like us to do, is?
Propose both.
Submit both of them to the council and let them choose? Are we allowed to do that?
Yep. But I would like to schedule for another public hearing for, for next month, and then after next month, well, we can send it to council.
Okay, so we don't have to choo- we don't, we.
We don't have to pick anything tonight. I, I just wanted to have the debate.
We have to pick anything before it goes to them.
Yep, I just wanted to have, I wanted to have plenty of time for everybody to digest, uh, feedback, everything.
Once, once we're done here, we need to send this to the counselors then, not wait for the agenda.
Yes.
Or, or anything else. I mean, it has to be on the agenda.
Yep.
But you need to send this to them then.
Yep.
Time to look at it, examine it.
Exactly. Cause, you know, my first reaction was, Jesus Christ, they're asking for the moon here.
So, you're not wrong. I, I equally thought that when I first looked at it. I had the sticker shock of, oh my God, what have I done?
And, and I had the same. But after I look at it, particularly these things.
Yeah, across them.
You know, I suddenly, you sit here going, wait, and like I said, we just bought a million dollar fire truck. We bought the police department a four-wheel drive vehicle that cost forty, fifty thousand dollars, and every department in the city is, is in the same boat. Here, here we have, you know, recreation that have to fix roofs and, and pay for all kinds of stuff. I, we oughta.
Yep.
I'm now in favor.
Excellent.
Um, and, and this does allow us to collect impact fees for projects that were not originally assessed an impact fee, so.
All those developments that are complete?
Yep, all those developments that are not complete, regardless of their investment status. If their approval is over five years old, we'd be collecting an impact fee from them.
Yeah, we have so many.
Yep.
We can retroactively collect.
Yep.
In the pipeline.
Sure can, we, I even checked with legal.
The maximum we can get, like if the apples are there.
That would be a bad surprise for some of them.
Oh, boy.
Oh, boy.
After tonight's meeting, it'll be flooded with permits, applications.
I think that's why there's a certain developer that is pushing very hard, very fast right now, but, that's just me.
All right.
No, he was, they were not here tonight.
Okay.
Do we need to, do we need to do anything?
Yeah, if I just have you vote to schedule that for a public hearing next, next month?
I would, I would vote to schedule the next public hearing, second public hearing at our November meeting.
Thank you.
Second, okay. Yeah, all in favor?
What are we doing? Voting for the public hearing?
Second public hearing.
On the impact.
Yeah.
For those who care, Toronto leads New York six to three, about another third.
What's New York? Couldn't care less. What's New York?
Just send New York home.
All right, on that, I suspect people are wanting to go home, so I will, um, I will endeavor to go much faster. Um, so, we had a.
Talk like Tyler.
Talk about Tyler?
Talk like Tyler.
Oh, oh, I, oh, I don't have that ability. So, the last thing is, we had approved, um, amending the short-term lodging ordinance, and we had sent that to city council. So, the funny story, uh, it spent so long going through committee, coming here for public hearings, that in that time that it was here, state law also changed. Um, so, state law changed in that we cannot, uh, regulate in zoning occupancy limits.
That hundred fifty day a year goes away?
No, 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 the number of occupants somebody's allowed to have in a house.
How could they not regulate?
The state just said, you cannot regulate that.
They got thirty people in there?
We, unfortunately, state law changed, and they said, nope, municipalities are not allowed to regulate, and this had to do with a court ruling that came down, and so, fighting that was happening down, and, um, a college town to our south, uh, I believe it was keen about, uh, the zoning ordinance being overly burdensen- uh, burdensome in regulating the number of people that were, students that were in, uh, a bedroom. So, so we proposed a bill, and it was passed, saying that you can no longer regulate the number of occupants. Um, so, we have lost it a bit. So, we had to remove that excerpt from our short-term lodging permit, uh, ordinance. So, with that, I need to schedule another public hearing for that next month.
Lord have mercy.
We need to make a motion for that.
I need a motion for that.
Make a motion that we schedule another public hearing based on the, uh, presidency access use.
Second.
Make a motion, we secede from the state.
Remember that, too.
Can we have a second? All in favor?
Was that from the secession? Is that what you're just voting for?
That's like unbelievable.
Oh, so, hey, did you see some of the laws?
So, I don't know if anybody's following it. There are like over a hundred laws that are already being proposed and conquered right now. Eighty of them are zoning.
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah.
So, they are trying to just.
They wanna keep away local.
Take complete control of local zoning and have, you have no say in what happens.
It's free state.
So.
Wow. Okay.
You know, it's also, yeah, a factor of the difference between many of those representatives' communities in Laconia and a few other, you know, rooms and meals packs. This city collects a huge amount of rooms and meals packs, we get nothing back.
Aren't we supposed to?
Yep.
We used to. I think we used to get forty percent or something like that. Um, I, I talked to the, the school the other day, and they had budgeted a million something, uh, for the shortfall from the state. And, and when they found out what the numbers were after the budget was completed, they needed another three hundred and forty thousand dollars that the state had cut. Uh, I mean, it's gotta stop.
We have to appoint somebody else to CIP.
Oh, yes, um, I also need, um, I need to replace one member of the capital improvement committee. You cannot do it. Good try.
Thank you.
Gail, where's she?
You're already on there. Uh, Gail, she's not here. You could, uh, move your feet, lose your seat, or whatever it is, uh.
Who? Gail.
She's here to leave. Curfew.
She's on the CIP.
I just need a motion for that.
Who else is on the CIP?
Listen, I'd like those meetings to be a little shorter.
I'm having trouble with the sausage in the casing.
I think there's a, the guy over there that.
I'm not gonna lie, I blushed a little bit.
God.
I see you there, sir.
I've got a full plate.
Well, poop if you see straight.
It's only, it's, it's only Thursday nights for the month of October and a little bit into November. It's not, it's not a heavy lift.
It actually goes pretty well.
Yeah, it is on Thursday nights.
Yep.
I, I really wish you would. I really wish you would.
Is there anybody else that's not here we can nominate?
Uh.
You mean like starting issue days?
Yep, like starting on Thursday.
It's, it's, um.
This is my second meeting this week.
Right, I was gonna say.
And, and Thursdays will be my third meeting this week.
And yours.
Yeah, mine.
And yours, yeah.
Yours.
People are very thankful for planning board members. The community is very excited about planning board members.
They love us so very much.
In fact, I think I heard you, there's a hundred percent increase in pay next year, from a hundred, from.
From zero to double that.
Well, and I heard that the chairman usually gets nominated as, as citizen of the year and gets a hundred thousand dollar check from the mayor.
That's amazing.
I'm, I'm hoping for that.
We, we bought his building for like seven hundred thousand.
I thought, I heard it was five million.
It already closed, right?
Yeah, that was, yeah, yeah.
Do they need to move it to the bottom of this or something?
Yeah.
Yeah, go back to Colorado.
Are we done?
Um.
Do we have a, do you have a mark?
You need a CIP person.
I need a CIP person.
Shouldn't it be somebody for the general public?
No, I already got the general public filled.
It's gotta be somebody.
It's gotta be one, I gotta, I'm gonna replace, uh, uh, Charlie St. Clair on CIP.
So, it's Gary or Gail, are our options?
Gary, yeah, I've got my place. Planning board members alternates or, or any, there's no other alternates.
No, I am, uh, I am running low on the members.
Well, what if you listed out as David Willett, and then Dave Willett, and just said they were two different people?
And you just.
Devita, and you wear a wig.
You walk out, she walks in.
Now you're pushing it. No, I, I don't know. I mean, we got, we had two choices. It's either Gary or Gail. Let's make a decision. Gary, come on, step up to the.
I heard Gary, Gary had plans.
Um, what about Wolf?
He resigned from the planning board.
Good move, Wolf, aren't you?
Yeah, I, I believe this house was, is for sale as well.
Gary, it's only four or five meetings.
Yeah, I'll show you right here, bud. Look, look, this is, this is right here. Okay, this is where we're at right now. Today's the seventh, so we got this one, this Thursday this week.
What time do they meet?
Six.
Starting this dinner again.
Well, you know what, it's.
Eat a little earlier.
I don't wanna say it, but you could probably, you could shed a little bit.
I don't even come home till six thirty.
So, thi- this is when we'd meet, and, and look, there's no meeting right there on the thirtieth of October.
Look, there's not even a meeting.
Yeah, just, it's your Halloween treat.
Actually, I'm gonna be gone on the twenty-third. I'm gonna be in Vermont.
But you'll do the best you can to attend the other ones, correct, Gary?
That's why we have it on, on.
Yeah, you can, you can watch it on YouTube. It is fantastic.
I don't know if I'll have Wi-Fi where I'm gonna be in Vermont.
You can watch it when you get back home.
All right.
Yeah, Gary.
Thank you.
I nominated Gary.
I mean that.
I don't even, I don't even have a doghouse to go sleep in.
I got one, come on over here.
I just got rid of your cousin. Kathleen just left. She did? That's true. That's true.
There you go.
Want that?
All right.
I've got a copy.
Here it is.
And you got one for the refrigerator.
You want this map of the campground?
No.
All is in favor, say aye.
Motion to adjourn?
Aye.
And, and that. Motion made.
Thank you.
It was unanimous.